Trying to get the agenda up here, so excuse me. Okay. It's eight oh four, December sixth. Steel County Session Meeting have called meeting to order. First thing is appointment new chairman.
I'll make a motion we appoint Brandon Krueger as chairman.
Richard's got a motion, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Don seconds. All in favor signify by saying I.
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 Paul is say no. Motion carried. Uh, let's move into agenda additions. Anybody got any agenda additions?
I got a couple Wayne back and wants to meet with us. Two matters of closing at noon on the twenty third December. And then he is requesting that we go to two or four hour meetings per month, but I think we can. We'll just, we can discuss that.
Okay.
Uh, also, uh, Gary Heim called for the bridge. Called a replacement, so if you talk to him, he said.
Nine AM Gary, Gary's gonna come up here, we're gonna. Talk about the Colgate Township Bridge. For township, so.
And then also, I think we need to have another meeting in December before year end. I think we should maybe like the fifteenth, fourteen, fifteenth, depending on your guys' schedules. To kind of tidy things up before year end, and also the park board should have a meeting as well to tidy things up.
The other day.
So I don't, I don't know what your guys' schedule was Wednesday, Thursday work for you guys?
My change.
Eight AM. Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Or Thursday, then let's do Thursday. Thursday work? Fourteen or fifteenth, excuse me, yes fifteenth.
December fifteen. Ten AM.
Well, I was just looking at, maybe we should go the. Yeah, or maybe people are leaving early for Christmas, maybe, maybe we should do like twenty twentieth.
Yeah, two, two, the twentieth.
That work for you guys? December twentieth eight AM.
What about possibly in making, if we're gonna have two meetings a month, making our second meeting an evening meeting? So the public can attend that people that are working that have jobs, uh, don't have to be here, don't have to leave work to get here at eight o'clock in the morning to talk, to, you know, visit with us.
That's. That's. Yep, when, when Wayne comes in, Don, I think we'll, we'll have that. We can kind of.
Okay.
Go back and.
Sure, yeah.
Figure that out, so is there any other additions?
I wanted to see about when I've watched the meetings in the past. I've seen three people have asked about something that wasn't acted on at the previous meeting. So adding a whole business. To the agenda.
Okay.
You want that as a reaffirming?
Yeah. I guess, I don't know, we need to take action on it or anything, or just add it. Okay. Maybe beneficial.
Do we got a motion to approve the agenda additions?
I still move.
Barry, any second?
Second.
Yo. All the favors signified by saying I.
I.
All polls say no. Motion carries. I'll be, is everybody read through the minutes? Lead a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Don, we got a motion.
Well, second.
Thirty seconds. All favors signify by saying I.
Bye.
Bye.
All pose say no. Motion carried. Um, we gotta look at new portfolio de- delegations, because everybody kind of went through them in your packet.
I would like to keep the road. Department portfolio and then also be part of the road. Uh, gravel, the road. Roads, not only the roads, but the shop and then little port portfolio of the. HR, we've got a lot of stuff going on that we've been working on the last year or so, so I'd like to be part of those still.
Okay. As far as myself being the chairman. I would, I would like to keep the roads gravelled, and I think we can move the bridges. Portfolio underneath the roads gravel bridges and make that all one. Um, we have a lot of projects that we've been working on. That we continue to work on. That, uh. I feel that I would like to keep that, if that's something we can agree on, and I'd also like to keep the D S. And, uh, I have another term, my term's still going on the lake, on the A- Agassi Valley Health Board. So I would be willing to keep that. But I'll. Beings with the, the. Extra duties of the chairman, I will be letting probably the Lake Agassi Board go. So. It's my opinion, you three guys, and I mean, what are you thinking, I guess, is kind of.
Since I, since I've worked for the county for eighteen years, I would like to have the, uh, the public buildings. Uh, including the courthouse and courthouse personnel. And then courthouse, uh, SecCom, I think that has to do with the, uh. The court system security. At least those three, and then you need something else that's not covered, I can cover that too, but those three in particular.
Can you, let's kind of summarize where we're at, what you, what, what did you propose?
Roads and gravel, um, comedy shop, and then. And then HR personnel.
Then Brandon.
Uh, and Richard wants the roads and gravel.
Well, we can share that, um.
And then that's, I think we should add bridges in there too.
Yeah.
So. To, I'm just trying to make a summary, so.
Yeah.
And so Brandon, where were you at?
So I'd like to be part of the roads and gravel and bridges. D S. And then I'll be still filling my term on the Agassi Valley Health Service Board.
Agassi Valley Human Service Board.
Give my service board.
With that is. Brandon Perry down is, uh, that's. I was. So one commissioner, uh, uh, asked me on the.
Yep.
Something like that. That board meets once a month. And Don.
Did you say? Said I would like to be on the public buildings. Entering the courthouse, I want to be on the courthouse personnel. And then be for our set gone. Brandon, are you gonna share bridges with, uh, with Richard then? Okay.
So what we have left is water resource, tax director, weed board, public health board and public health. Correct?
Yep. Sounds right.
I'd be willing to do water resource. I guess, I don't know, do you want us to try to choose what we want to do here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, public health board, public health, would that be? Would that be sufficient?
Yeah. So we have tax director and weed board left.
I mean.
Weed board also includes some N D S U.
And yes, you, that would be, it could be the, the hinge pin, Brandon, with, with, uh. N D S U. Could be Phil, who was taking the Lake Agassi. Board. That's requires. They have a meeting every. Um. Couple months or in Fargo, we can join it by Zoom too. It is something that Steel County is part of along with. Don't quote me on that, there's a few other counties that are part of that, but if they, they, they do serve, serve funding for downtown projects, um, things the cities have used in the past to build things. So that would be something that.
There's one other item we should probably add on there too, is required to have two commissioners for the J D A.
Alright.
Yeah. And Ted and Russell. I'm on there now as a representative from Hope.
That suffice as one commissioner then?
No, no.
And we can't, we can't serve.
Yeah, I think you're kind of conflicted out on one, either on one of them.
But then the bad things, you put two more commissioners on there.
You might have to consider resigning from Hope.
Yeah, and I could, I could still, I'd be willing to do this as a mission.
Probably the best way to go, otherwise it's kind of compromises that board a little bit, I don't mean that in a bad way, just being, we ended up with three commissioners by kind of a default there, so.
Yeah. I don't know if we're gonna get anybody else from Hope to fill that. Representative position.
When's your next meeting?
Uh, next week, Tuesday. J D A.
Yeah.
But I guess I was talking about our city council meeting.
Okay.
Where I can, where I can discuss with one of them to get a.
When's your next J D A meeting?
That was next Thursday. And that's canceled for the month.
So there's not another meeting in for J D until January?
Until January, we had no business.
So you got a. Then we have time to fill that, so you should check into that. I don't mean to interject too much, but I'm sure that's streamlined, you should probably check in with Hope. Get their position on. You know, your dual role, and then if they can find somebody else, that'd be best, then you could go on as a condition.
That's what I wanted, was not to have to have three commissioners on that.
Yeah.
If you talked to Hope. At the head of next meeting, we'll have more information. So the J D A should be something that's discussed at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll see if I can get somebody to fill the, off the city council to fill the. Whole position.
Do one of you guys want to do J D?
Good.
Okay. Brandon.
And then would you guys decide like Agassi Board?
Brandon, weren't you gonna handle that?
He's gonna have it for the end of his term, right?
Yeah.
Then you wanted to give it up or not?
Well, like. I'd like to not have it now.
Oh, do one of you guys want to take that?
Oh.
That, so, well, the, the Lake Agassi Board, that's different between the Agassi Valley Health.
Well, which one did you want to give up?
The Lake Agassi Board.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Do one of you guys want to take that?
Who has the water issues?
The water resource, very.
Water resource, I took that. All of you, unless you want to switch, if you wanted to do that, Don, and I couldn't do the. Agassi Valley Board. You wanted to take on a water resource or?
So.
What's that, what's it all about, I guess?
So the Lake, the Lake Agassi Board is, is a funding source.
Yeah, it's different.
For smaller communities. So they meet. They put together, uh, I'm sure Perry, you guys have kind of dealt with some of that for the city. Um, I know Finley has to help with projects with loans. Um, they decide on projects, things like that, they meet in Fargo. And, uh. Go through some of that, like Brian, Brian was on there also, so I wonder if we gotta have two commissioners on there.
Yeah. If you're gonna make it off, we'll have.
Fine, too. Now that I think of that.
I'd be willing to, to be on that.
I'd be willing to be on that as well with Perry.
Well, we should be covered, right?
I've seen it some minutes, Brandon, you attended those via Zoom or?
Via Zoom, you can, you can do it via Zoom, it's, it's. Probably not the, you know, better as being there, but. Sometimes, sometimes with time constraints, it's just, you have to. Okay, do we got that figured out?
I get them all this.
Okay.
Yep. Do we need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we approve. Uh, the selected.
Richard with a motion, I'll be looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Don seconds, all his favors signify by saying I.
I.
I. All opposed, say no. Motion carried. Alright. We're on to miscellaneous department updates and handouts. So that would be the.
Like the Agassi Valley.
Agassi Valley Human Service on border, your meeting minutes, you guys read through that.
There's typically no actions that needs to be taken on that.
There's, and then the next one's balances. Only ledger. These are provision.
You can't look at that.
You can just read through that, just whatever, if you leisure.
I read through that already. I didn't know why we got all this financial information from Trail County, it's not related directly to the.
Agassi Valley.
Agassi Valley, okay.
So the, just for you guys, going forward, uh, information on that is that, so Trail is, Agassi Valley Human Services consists of Trails, Steel Counties, and. As part of legislation, when, uh, when the zones, human service zones throughout the state are created, they're all multi-county, except for some of the bigger counties like Cass is its own. But then you had to choose a, what's called a host county, and that host county does all the. Uh, financials, so that's why you see the Trail Counties listed on that, because they have, they, they process the financials.
Just to add on to that, to the Agassi Valley Health thing, the last, last meeting, I know they were discussing some, uh. Updates they're doing to. The, the building they're in currently. Um, they're putting carpet in, they're doing a few updates. So there was, there was a question on some carpeting things that they were doing, that Trail County was gonna full poll bill for that. And as they get further into it, I said, maybe we would look at. Coming back to the Steel County Commission for our split. As far as, uh. What do we do, seventy-five, twenty-five, that, is that the?
I was thinking it's so much.
Twenty or?
It's either eight or twenty or seventy.
So, so I did speak on behalf that we would be willing to look at that. Um, coming in. And we can all discuss it, and if that's just something that we would bring back later, so I just, just put that on your plate a little bit, I guess.
And then just for additional information, just because you guys are fully up to speed, is that, so what, the human service zone. Offices in Trail are located in a rental. Portion of the new. Co- heritage bank, Co- Heritage Bank, but Wells Fargo Bank, Wells Fargo sold out of the building room, and. Co- Heritage bought it, we would, the, he was serving the previous renter from Wells Fargo, that got, uh, shifted to Dakota Heritage, and then they obtained additional space as well, so they have all of their employees. Uh, who aren't in steel, in one, under one roof over there now, and so that's the building that's being. There's some renovation going on to accommodate those offices, and there's some old carpet and stuff. So that's what's going on. So they're, they're completely out of the courthouse, it's right across the street.
Right on the west side.
They maintain offices here.
Okay. Well, next item, correspondence received from Renee Rayner. You have a chance to look that, I am going to refer them questions to Turk State's turn of stock.
Yeah, I've looked, I just saw, I guess, was emailed on November twenty first, I just saw it when the packet came along, I've looked through it. A number of things don't have anything to do with the commission and. Um, the balance, uh. Included by dealer open records requests, so I'll address those with, with, with the cooperation of the Otter's Office. And. So we actually, so I'll take care of it.
Okay. Uh, we got general roofing at thirty, Todd Keller.
Well, is he coming there at eight thirty? I thought he sent another email.
I thought, yeah, that was one that he was going to.
Um, he said he's not coming to meet today.
So I think, I don't know if you guys read through it, but part of the building is starting to crumble up top, so they want to get approval from us to rent a man lift, so give us enough. Was it seventeen hundred or twenty-five hundred? Something like that.
This also should take, take place sooner rather than later, so.
So we would need a motion for that.
We have money in the fund just for general building like that?
We do, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Perry, do we have a second?
Second.
Brandon, seconds. All favors signify by saying I.
I.
I. All polls say no. Motion carried. Alright, so let's move on to B S O position. State's turn stock.
Good news, bad news. Bad news is we received after. Three, maybe even four weeks of advertising in a lot of papers in this general area of eastern part of the state. Trail Steel. Over, we didn't get any happens, I mean, any inquiries. Nothing. So, prior, prior meetings, um. Russ, a former chairman, had asked me to inquire of this Trail County B S O to see whether she would be interested, and whether she would have time. She expressed, so I did reach out to her, she expressed some interest, um, but that discussion has gone further than that. I also have been staying in contact with Dennis Kupaska, who was our most recent B S O. And thanks to him, I'd like to state publicly that he, despite not being on our payroll any longer, continues to. Help and assist the veterans in Steel County with their claims, he's got four, five, six of them going on, and he is doing it. He's the veteran service officer in Griggs, and he's doing that just because of his care and respect for veterans, and he knows most of them here in Steel, so. Pretty decent of him, and, uh. Worthy of our thanks for that, um, I did ask him, now that he's heading, so he was only in B S O here for. Couple of mon- months, and things went south for a variety of reasons, and, uh, I did ask him. Whether he would be interested in reapplying, and he indicated that he did have an interest, so. Those are avenues. I, I didn't take any of those any further, uh, prior to meeting with you folks, to see where you wanted me to go. So we have two options, continue our discussion with Trail. Or, and or continue discussions with. With Dennis, see if he wants to come back on board. I think part of the issue with Dennis, and I'm not gonna speak for him, but I think part of the reason. My own. Analysis is that the, the initial paperwork stuff was pretty tricky and complex compared to what he said to do, because we have. Steel has a rural transportation grant that pays for veterans to be hauled. Transported to medical appointments, because we're considered a high, high rural county, and there's a lot of record keeping that has to be done on a monthly basis, and turned into the veteran services office in Fargo for reimbursement. And that got a little, uh. I think, my own, my own feeling is that that got a little bit too much for him, but now I think we have that pretty well under control, a former. Yeah, so, uh. Passed away, basically did all that on his own, and. It took us a while to get up to speed on how he was doing it, because there wasn't any time for transition, given that Dennis had gone into the hospital pretty quickly, and of course, he asked pretty completely. Before he could train, and you want to. He done that, so I'm gonna change, new Dennis's perspective. What do you get, want me to go with that?
Let's listen as a temporary position, what kind of hours a week does that?
It's a, it's a, uh, part-time position.
Mm-hmm.
And the hours, I don't know if there was ever, it is a set salary, and so it's paid monthly, it's like nine, ten grand, and just divided up, and so it's not really an hourly thing, it's more of. As needed, and, uh. And then, and I can come, and they, you know, talking to. The V S Os I talked to in this process, I mean, that can, they can call you at night, they can want to meet during the day, so it's kind of, kind of have to rely on that. So it's kind of, kind of have to rely on that. Who's ever filling that position to just be available. And then there's a, there's a ad in the paper that has the contact information. So the veterans can see that, who they contact and then they use that. Typically that's their personal, their work on a cellphone. So not set hours, I think, are past BSO, passed away, was here like every Wednesday afternoon or every Wednesday or every Tuesday or something like that. But it's a flexible position because of just the nature of the beast. You have to be far as sometimes you have to go meet with veterans at their homes sometimes.
It's going to be hard to find somebody to fill that position.
You say Dennis is interested in that?
He expressed, I don't want to overstate what he said, but he, he expressed that he would be interested in discussing.
I think we should continue to visit our town.
So exhaust that prior to checking the trail again.
I think first Dennis and then second, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with Richard. I think since Dennis is a, a county resident, I think we have an obligation to try to reach out to him first. If he does not, uh, show an interest, then I think Trail County would be our next option. I totally agree with Richard.
Like I said, not to be redundant, but, the good thing is that our veterans are continuing to be serviced in terms of claims and in terms of transportation because those are handled by, Mayor.
And that's the main priority. Yes.
So, but we got to get a BSO position filled and.
Yep.
Yes. So I'll work towards that.
Will be, it's a part-time job. If we do end up looking for someone to fill that position, is there a possibility that it can be benefited? Make it more appealing for someone.
It'd be hard because we have part-time people in the, in the corridor. So it don't get benefits either.
They have to have so many hours in order to qualify for the benefits that are available. And then I don't think the BSO position, needs that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But yeah, certainly it would be more, more inviting positions or benefits. But like I said, I didn't get any, I didn't get any inquiries about salary, whether it was benefits. I got nothing.
Yeah.
Okay, Charlie. On HR.
Yeah. So Emily, several months ago, had brought up that there were various county employees who serve on boards. And, um, some of those boards, meet during county business hours and, she's not here today to express exactly what she was looking at, looking for, but my understanding was that she felt that some of them were being paid, to be on those boards while they were on the clock in Steel County. So I reached out to county, all the county employees and said whoever serves on boards, here's my questions and, so I sent an email to all the county employees saying name, please provide the name of the board you serve on, how often that board meets, time of day the board meets, compensation, all compensation received for the board position. Was there travel expenses or reimbursement for that? I think I got back five or six. Some of them meet during court, during business hour, business hours, some of them don't. Some of them are filled by what I call exempt employees. Some of them are filled by hourly employees. I don't see this, based upon the responses I received, I don't see it as being a real pressing issue. And so what I'd like to do is rather than go through all of this, they're all in there different answers and, again, I don't see it being as a huge pressing issue. Not losing thousands of dollars, they can tell you that based upon the responses. What I'd like to do is, I would just say we'll put all this stuff together because I had to follow up with a few of them. But I think I have every, all the information now. What I'd like to do is, is, table it, whole business. I scan email all this, all the questions and answers to you because I had to follow up. So they're not just answers to those four questions. Scan email to all you guys. You guys can review and we can discuss more next meeting.
Okay, that'll be good. Table that.
So that's been part of your whole business for next.
Okay.
Charlie, you're still up with.
I feel very popular.
Legal bill received.
Okay. I'm going to give you guys some history on this too, because the, the three new commissioners aren't going to know about this. So, there is a statute, believe it or not, in North Dakota that says that in a divorce action involving, that, that involves, children, either a party to that divorce action or the court on its own motion may appoint, was called a guardian ad litem to represent or be the representative, representative of, the children involved. If they find these various factors are meant, okay? Well, that happened to Steel County unbeknownst to us last year where it was action by two people who, two, married couple in, you know, Steel County, had kids. One of their attorneys asked for guardian ad litem, claimed to the court that they didn't have the financial resources to, pay for guardian ad litem. Statute says guardian ad litem has to be an attorney. So, but then the statute goes on to state that the court has to set a fee. And then a guardian ad litem can be appointed to handle that process for that fee. A bunch of that stuff didn't happen. First of all, they didn't, there was no evidence presented to the court that, this couple was, unable financially to pay. The court did not set a fee. Instead, the court simply appointed an attorney. And the court said Steel County pays for it. We didn't get notice of it until we got a bill for six thousand some dollars. Even though the order that the court issued said that Steel County was supposed to have been served with that order, serve means either, certified mail or get a hold of the county state attorney, which is me to say, hey, Mr. Stock, we have this going on. You need to put a notice of this, blah, blah. None of that happened. And we kept getting even more bills to, up to a point where it was almost seventy-five hundred, seventy-eight hundred dollars. And I talked with the former commission about that and I told them that I was going to file an objection, which I did. I tuned up my paperwork into the Otter's Office, but I didn't get, attached to the bill. Basically, we, so we had a hearing and, I basically told the judge that I thought he did everything wrong. And I was a little bit, agitated about it and upset. That's a big bill that we haven't, we still budgeted for, weren't expecting. And, the judge then asked the attorney guardian ad litem, if she would be willing to reduce her bill. And she said she was to six thousand dollars rather than the seven thousand five, seventy-five hundred or whatever it was. And I was adamant that I think we should be have to pay or that it should be split three ways. I advocated as much as I could and the judge said six thousand dollars it is. So, uh, could this be appealed possibly in North Coast Supreme Court? Possibly, but for six thousand dollars, it's, you know, we're money to the bat on that. You know, throwing good money at that. So what I did do was I talked with Jenny, a clerk of court to see, I checked my own budget too, to see if we had any money that will be left over in, in budgets that are, part and parcel of the court system. See if we had money to pay and within those budgets, we'd have to just find money elsewhere. And talking to Jenny, she has about four thousand fifty dollars that we can take out of her, some of her line item budget amounts, to cover four thousand or so of that. And then we'd have to come up with the two thousand somewhere else. And so you guys would have to vote to allow, line item, items from Jenny's budget to include the court facility fee, seven witness fee, court-appointed attorney fee. And then she hasn't used her postage this year. Publishing, I'm sorry. She hasn't had to publish anything this year. Published, we had to put legal notices in the paper and that kind of stuff. So if you add all those up, she has four thousand fifty dollars that we could use towards that six thousand. And then you, I don't know where the other, the other money comes from. But you'd have to vote to allow that money to be redirected to what I would call, to all that to be redirected to the court-appointed attorney fund. At line item and then that could be taken out of there.
You know, the bad thing. So we approve this and how many more is going to happen?
Well, what you guys did do is put, you made a line item for, or you increased that court-appointed attorney thing for next year in case that happens. But I was telling you, it's just, the whole thing in my opinion was done wrong and.
This was our previous judge. He will no longer be.
He's, he's. I'll make a motion. We're going to take the money out of her budget to four thousand fifty dollars and the rest will come out of the general fund.
Richard's got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Don, seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried.
So the next item is clerk of court state funds, state employees. What's happening is that the, Supreme Court, the Chief Justice is, advocating for legislative change in the court, clerk of courts, uh, office or system. And, this is background for, I guess, maybe all of you is that currently under North Coast statutes, counties can elect whether they want to remain county employees and they're reimbursed for, a fairly large portion of the services they provide. The counties are from the, the court system, state court system. And then some counties have chosen just to be state-funded. And what I see is, counties that are similar to Steel, more of the rural, smaller counties prefer to maintain their local control. What the, Supreme Court through the, through the, uh, main judge is attempting to do is have legislation passed that effectively says the county don't have a choice anymore. Clerks of court will become state employees. And then the state pays for them. But the state then also has complete supervisory ability and authority over that clerk of court. And, locally, we don't have a choice when it's higher. And with Steel is an appointed position, but like Trail and Dicky and some of the other counties, they maintain a elected position. But the legislation says is, once your elected term runs, you either select to be a state employee or you're gone and we hire somebody else. And also with respect to Steel in particular, and there's a lot of other counties similar to Steel, who have a joint or dual clerk of court, recorder. In other words, our clerk of court is also our recorder, which statutes allow. The new legislation says, Jenny, you pick which one you want. You can be the recorder, but then you're not going to be clerk of court and we're going to hires. And, they're also kind of, pulling back the layers, but they're, they're really trying to do, or one of the objectives is, some of these bigger counties feel like they don't have enough staff or human resources to do the work. Like Cass says, they don't have enough clerks to court. But they really, with the, with the underlying plan here is for them to then start funneling Cass County work or Grand Forest County work or even, uh, early county work to smaller county clerks of court because they have them under their, Supreme Court, uh, authority. I personally do not think it's a good idea for Steel. I don't think it's a good idea for Trail. I have an idea for a lot of smaller counties because it takes them as local control over. And let's, let's be, you know, if you think about it, a lot of these, counties is, we have basically almost, Steel's had some turnover, but a lot of these counties have had lifelong people at those positions who be, who are elected. And, and I'm, I'm kind of advocating on behalf of all small counties now. I'll get, I can use Trails as an example. So Trails current clerk of court had previously worked as the assistant, clerk of court for like eighteen years. And had learned all the ropes, all the, all the internal stuff, knows everybody in the courthouse. And then when our clerk of court over there resigned during her term, she was moved up and then she ran for election. Which is a really, the continuity there is a big deal as far as efficiency and, it's just so many things that go on, rescheduling and, uh, you know, knowing who was, who was involved. And like we have, Jenny and I have a deal where, we can have on a Wednesday where somebody says Charlie, Joe Smith just called in and said his battery's dead and, and we confirmed that. His wife was on the phone and said he has, is blah, blah. Where you believe them. And I go to Jenny, let's just, let's just make the call and just give them one, give them on, we'll reschedule for them. We go into that state system, we don't have any ability to do that. We have no ability to, I'm not saying we should, you know, advocate to, to criminal defendants, but there's even, even if it's a citizen case. Say, one of you guys has a small claims case and you say, get out of my driveway. And the judge says, okay, Brandon couldn't get here. His petition dismissed. We're going to have no control over that anymore. Cause I won't, I won't be able to just call them and say, I called Jenny, Jenny, or she texts me and says, can we just reschedule this? Cause Doc can't get here today or something.
Where is this bill at within legislature?
It's, it's, uh, being proposed and I don't know whether it's a House bill or Senate bill.
Okay.
Okay. And so what other county, and that's good segue rather, because what other counties are doing is they are preparing, resolutions in opposition to this, that they want to submit. And what I am suggesting here is that we do the same. But also one step further, I'm suggesting here and Trail that we ask that our legislators come to meet with the commissions so that we can inform them of our position on it directly. Again, I don't know, I didn't have enough time to figure it. And I don't even know if it's been declared yet, whether it's going to be introduced in the House or the Senate. But I, I don't like it. I'm not, I know I'm sounding like I'm advocating against it. I am. Not trying to influence you guys, but I just don't see it as being a good thing for smaller counties. It would, it would, right now we, I feel and we've been complimented by the, the, our judges and they come out of Fargo that we have an efficient system, both in Steel and Trail. Things go smoothly. They come in here and we, go through cases and they're on their way and, and, and then, but it, it, and I'm not sure what, so currently like I mentioned, state reimburses Steel County for some of the clerk of court services. If the bill doesn't pass and it's, this gets, just continues as it is, then that system stays in place. If the bill's modified to say, okay, towns can choose, which is kind of what it is now, but are they going to then take away the fiscal funding? I don't know, but there's just, there's a lot of moving parts with this. But I'm requesting, suggesting that we take composition. You know, I can draft up your motion for our next meeting.
Okay. How's the board feeling that?
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea. I agree with Charlie.
Yep. If you guys want more information on it, I can.
There is a meeting and Dicky's coming on this September eighth. I'm sending you guys a Zoom link if you'd like to attend. Chief Justice Nelson will be in there answering questions and anyone that joins.
I think some of the other stuff too is that it takes, they haven't even figured out, like longevity, like, you know, using Jenny, you've been in your home years. To, yeah, okay. There, there's other like Trails has been, she's been there twenty plus years. She's going to be basically, the way the current legislation is, is that she's be, she should be considered a new hire. So she loses all of her, longevity, vacation, all that stuff.
Also, can I mention that now state takes over, will no longer, I would no longer be a clerk. I would be promoted down to a deputy. Um, so I want to have the same kind of, ways or resources of helping the community. That would kind of be stripped.
You wouldn't have any of the flexibility that you have under your current.
I mean, I couldn't meet with people hour after hour if they needed. There's, the sheriff's going to call me after hour and ask for, that would all be gone.
So what we need to do is, if this is something that, uh, the board wants to have a resolution to or get the. Get the legislators here. And or speak with them.
Yeah, I think we should do both.
And then, and then we can. We could do that.
Right, the North Dakota Association of Counties has came out in opposition to this and they've suggested that there be, if we put a. Excuse me, the uh. You studied more by an interim committee, so it won't necessarily go to a, the bill state, the session. But my concern is the snowball effect, you guys know how that works. So, so North Dakota Association of Counties has come up with that, when I get that resolution drafted, and we can address that at the next meeting, I'll, I'll get a copy of that. North Dakota Association of Counties uh. Resolution as well.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, steel auditor transition um. Jan is here today, that's good, um. I talked with uh. Couple of you, maybe not, maybe just Brandon or maybe you two, but, but uh obviously the transition from. When Emily to Jana happens April first um. And there's lots of stuff that goes on in the auditor's office. So I talked to Jan, I asked her if she was comfortable with me. Uh, reaching out to some of the other auditors in the area to see if they would be willing to assist her. And getting him to speed and teaching her and so on, and Trail was willing to do that. Um, did, 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 going to get email anything to you yet?
No.
Okay, but she's so good to help in the auditor and. Trail has a calendar that she follows as far as when things are due and when they have to be done and. There's all kinds of deadlines and timelines, right Carly? So, she's willing to provide that to Jenna and meet with Jenna and train her to the best she can. But Trail is changing to a different computer platform as of January one, there's some other counties in the area who have the same computer. Platform as we do as far as the tax and, you know, that stuff. Sounds like they, they would be willing to meet with Jenna as well. Haven't had a chance to talk to him and make a scene with him, she is interested in. Assisting in the transition and training. I, I, I hope to do that. But I wanted to broach this now because April first is gonna come sooner than we know and uh. And I decided to talk to Jan before I did any of this today, must have on your toes, as I told you, and you said, yeah, that'd be great. So I'm working with Jenna in that regard and one thing, we don't take action on now, but. Commission may want to consider is. Potentially getting Jenna on a payroll, at least maybe a month earlier than, than uh. April first, so that she's got the time to. Train and be ready to take over. Running when she, when April first comes. So. Just, I just want to bring it up with you and then I will also talk with Emily to see what her plans are as far as. Then you know, to assist and I'll keep working with Jen. And I think we should just. This should be a standing item for all business and go in for each meeting, so I can give you guys updates and ultimately, I think. Janet can let you know better when she. Gets into this more, but. I mean, you, you have a full-time job now, right?
Yeah.
And. I don't think we can just ask her to say, okay, quit your job and start training, we're asking her to train, we consider. Have your own. Well, actually, yeah, today, I just wanted to give you guys an update on where that was.
The state has some type of training available too, don't they, for new? Did they, all the auditors, they do for city auditors, I know.
They do, but not. It's, it's not, it's not specific to the, to the county and, and uh. I want to say I heard that it's not as in-depth when it comes to the tax and levies and that kind of stuff, it's more of the. General things, but I don't know for sure, but that's something we'll look into too. But yeah, they are newly elected point attorneys or newly elected. Officers, there is some.
Reach out to the Association of Counties.
I'll see if there's any.
Yes, we have a new city auditor several years ago, I hope, but we sent him to the North Dakota training, he said it was beneficial, so.
I know, I know the. North Carolina cities have a specific training for their auditors.
I think it was North Carolina cities. Actually, I did that.
I guess we could ask the North Carolina cities if we could. Send our Tony auditor there, might be helpful.
Might be.
Has anybody thought of uh contacting Linda Ledbetter, our former auditor?
Did Linda read it to you?
She did.
Okay, she's a wealth of information, she was.
And what did Linda inform you of?
Um, she has said that she's willing to help me if I needed anything. She has been out for quite a while.
Yes.
Something have changed, she didn't want to give me like the history and stuff like that.
Yeah. I think.
You got some resource we can.
That'd be a great resource, yes.
Right, I think that.
Is that all, Charlie?
Did you want me to continue with something else?
You got some more?
Yeah, I don't, thank you guys.
Okay.
Thanks Charlie.
New commitments, I need you to, we need to, to ground, to go through your paperwork.
Yes. Thanks Charlie.
Thanks Charlie, um. Guys, what we kind of do is we got the bills, we, we look through them. As you know, any questions, we'll kind of round up at the end. Before we approve them, so just keep kind of passing them around.
Okay.
So let's uh. Do we want to do Gary? Take care, Gary.
Yeah, I would be sure.
So I'm gonna sort passes, yep, look through them and then. If there's any questions, then we'll. We're gonna. I'll see if Reed.
How far away is he?
I don't know, Mike's here, I see Mike, so.
Well, we could probably, we'll maybe put Gary in front of you real quick.
So hold on to this, Jessica, just give us a second, alright?
Gary, do you want to sit here so you can be on the mic so we can. We, we kind of met uh. Last week a little bit about the culvert replacement and cold new township. I think we roughly think it's gonna be fifty thousand in place. Usually what we normally do with the, what we've been doing, I guess, is split in half ways with the county township. And we do finance it for a year or two.
Okay.
So um, is that something you guys would be interested in doing?
Yeah, I.
And to give you guys a little more background, so where there's a bridge closed in uh Colgate Township and. Uh, the bridges are the counties' problems, so. The state closed it and. What we've been doing with some of the townships is splitting it, say we can put a culvert in it, and this one we can be about fifty thousand, we roughly think.
Yeah, the culvert's right around thirty-two thousand, they're putting two eight footers in there and then, you know, whatever it's gonna cost for Blake to rip it out and. Put it all back in, so that's kind of what we were thinking is gonna be right around that fifty thousand mark or. Depends what happens between now and next spring, I guess.
Temporary type of thing. It'd be a permanent fix. As long as, I mean. So as long as it doesn't get washed out, you know, I mean, it's, but that's why they.
Well, the, that's kind of what the engineer figured out is we're going with what he suggested and. And it's still a lot cheaper than putting a bridge in, I guess, so.
Yeah.
So little, little back history, the state comes around and checks the bridges, correct? Reed. And they decide. And they can just close.
They can just close it.
And then it's, and then it's like, okay, well, that's, that's awesome, and then uh, so now we're, this is kind of one of the positions we're in, okay? So what do we do? And you know, just a bridge, we can't just go out there and, you know, throw a culvert in and it's all great again, but. So. And it puts the townships and the county, I guess, that. That kind of uh, what do we do?
Because it's usually, uh, so after. This deal's done, so then the county also says after we do this part. If it gets washed out again, then we, we don't take any responsibility afterwards, we give that all to the township.
Yeah. It is what it is, right?
It's the best, best option for the, to get it opened up again.
Yeah. Yeah.
And for right now, you know. We've been able to keep up as county with these culverts, but there's gonna probably get a lot more and there's eventually, we're just gonna have to say no.
Right, yeah. Where do we get the funding for this project?
Usually take it sometimes out of our farm to market, um. Usually that's where it comes from, I think, is.
Do we have sufficient funds in that account?
We do.
Okay.
Two culverts, I've got a word, uh. And then, uh, you know, talking with Gary, uh, we're gonna deliver them to K R B. So that they're, they're not sitting out on site, somebody shoot bullet holes, it's too expensive to. Sit out on the site. So the same thing, the Edendale Township culvert that uh will be delivered to K R B. They're gonna be putting in, so I think you.
I've talked to Blake, yeah, so we're on track, yeah.
Plus a FEMA project for the township. Here included it on his tracker, so uh we're gonna follow through with the FEMA side of it too for the river. Stuff from there, so we'll figure that out. If this was to be.
Any other questions, you guys, yeah? Nope, what's the work timeframe, or what, we're gonna try to put it in this?
Well, we want it to spring. And you know, that is.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
But yeah, we'd like to have them done, because you know. There is a lot of traffic down there, you know. Think about it, and then all of us that needed for. Get to our fields and that, so.
I don't want to have any road shut, no.
I, I would think that. That one there, the plate could almost. That could be one of his projects along with the water.
See that, that's.
Everything, it's heavily based on that, uh because. Uh, it, he, they're coming off a state road and come right up to the, you know, which you guys would say, no problem, just go get it done. You know what I mean, but they could get to that project by running state road and that's a ponderous project. State road there, so. Yeah, I would say we have a decent spring.
Yeah.
We don't know.
And as far as getting rid of it, uh, does it matter what we do?
We'll take the, we'll take the bridge apart, we know on the top.
Sure, take the good stuff, right?
The departments and stuff like that, uh, he could do that with people. And stuff, but we'll take the bridge decking off and, okay, stuff, so that's what we've been doing.
And for the, for the FEMA side of it, that actually works really well, because I have to say that the final list is more is, is here, what Reed does with it after it's in county land. It's, it's a heartbeat, but it has to come back. Your. Hard as possible, from there, it's whatever.
So between you and me, I can burden the rest of them to vary it out by two.
Yeah, we didn't hear that.
Make things quicker.
Yeah.
So the town should be willing to do that.
Yeah, if you're gonna help us pay for half of a debt, we'll do.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we move forward with that project.
Motion from Richard, I'll be looking for a second.
Second.
Very seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All polls say no. Motion carried.
Okay.
Thanks, Gary.
So you, you, one more question, you know, the financing part, you said you guys helped for.
Your financing.
If we just would finance.
I'm gonna pay for the culvert tomorrow. So you're gonna get billed with the top of it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so we go. We, basically, we go half of it and then the other half is completed, so.
Yeah.
Absolute choice. Yeah.
Okay.
You know where to set the bill. Just tell him I said.
All right, well, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice, thank you.
We will move on to the weed board. Jessica, Megan.
These are what checks behind a regular.
Vultures, yes.
Vultures are.
Yep. There'll be. Be a bunch of them. Some of it's on P car, too, sorry about that. Yep, yep, keep that on there. I'm sure Carly will. Recess the, the. County commission meeting. For the weed board.
Yep.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to recess the county commission meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Richard, you got a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Don seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All polls say no. Motion carried, Jessica.
Hi. Um, for the old business, I handed out the. Um, minutes from last meeting. And the map. Of the former MRS report. It's October. One. And then for the new business. Um. Wanted to update about the Golden Lake. Weed spraying. Um, you got thirty-nine vouchers. And then for the township. We got eight. Um, no landowner reimbursements this year. And then for the leafy spurge flea beetles, we were unable to get any this year. But we have. Fifty units ordered for next year.
So what do you have left for the, sorry to interrupt, but what do you have left for the weed spraying, you have six thousand left? Or?
It's been all exhausted.
We are, how much?
I have to, maybe a hundred dollars.
Is anybody else talking to you guys about bringing the wheel in? Is anybody else talking about bringing a bill in? Any other townships?
Yes, I believe, um. Is it five, Josh Austin said?
Five townships?
Yes, they never sprayed knowing that they weren't gonna get reimbursed.
So there's five more townships bringing bills in?
No.
Oh.
They did not, they were going to spray.
Okay.
But I even, I would keep Josh updated on how many volumes can be turned in. And since there was no money left.
Okay, I, I misunderstood you, so there's no more bills probably coming for townships?
We received. Um, from Golden Lake residents, and I just say there's no more money and you're not reimbursing it here.
And the reason I asked, the last year we had an issue that we, I think we. Put thirty thousand on last year. Uh, and we ran over, I think, like thirty-five or so. And Brandon did reach out, he did get a grant to get those townships paid, but. This year with the budget cuts and everything, we actually lowered it to twenty-four thousand, I think, didn't it? Or no, we did go to thirty.
Thirty, thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Thirty-five. So we did raise the budget a little bit. To thirty-five. But.
So is it kind of a first come, first served?
Yes.
Okay.
And the interest has been. Talking with, and it would maybe just commissions, they would never use that. Money, but now we have somebody locally that's spraying the. They're, they're using.
It was used, you know, back when there was a sky around spraying, but then there was a couple of years that it just don't be sprayed, so. So then they kind of took away from the budget and knocked it down and.
Yeah.
And here we are, we're getting a road spread again.
Yep, good.
Sorry, I was just putting a little history to these. Thank you.
Um, the area two meeting was held October twenty fourth in Valley City. Um, the tag. Was exhausted for this year. And the N D W C A. Is scheduled January second to the fifth. And then winter show is in Valley City, March eighth to the twelfth. A budget review.
I guess before we jump into that, I'm just. Help Jess along, so that tag, to give some history, that is targeting the assistance grant. That's what Brandon bought for last year's townships to cover the funds that. We did not have as a colony to reimburse them. That is on a myenium and so the money. That would have been allocated to Steel County got exhausted in twenty twenty one. So there's no additional funds that was gonna tap into for twenty twenty two.
But they'll be available twenty three?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would be five thousand dollars. Hopefully. So on that budget. I, cause I visited you guys, right, visited commission earlier this year regarding Golden Lake. So the homeowners can receive a one hundred dollar reimbursement for. Their uh control of cat tails or lake weed species. And those weed species don't technically fall on the noxious weed list. So I just raised the commission like. Is that a good use of funds when we're taking away money for the townships to be reimbursed? And then it was also brought up, do we just hire, in the case, now we have Josh Ottenson who sprayed. A lot of the townships, can we just hire him to spray just the county roads and then it's the township roads fall under. Township responsibility, there's no more reimbursement. So going forward, just. Like addressing those concerns again, so we know how to allocate funds for next year.
So what, this is kind of just a question. Is there, is there somebody going around the lake and doing that?
What is, what they do is use pellets. And that was pre- previously, it was an incentive because the lake was so weedy out there. To get them to do something with it out there. That's why it was. Introduced, I guess.
I guess the question that, that. Is in the back of my mind is, is what are they putting on in there? Do we know, is it a, is it an aquaside?
Yes.
Is it, is it labeled for that? Is it put on at the right amounts?
Yep, we're pissed, believing it's the homeowner and so hopefully they're ordering it and actually putting it in. First is just letting it sit.
So that's just, you know, with, with Josh doing it. He's got all the proper. You know, the proper certifications to be doing that stuff.
But the bad thing is though, not everybody does it.
Oh, no, I know.
So I mean, are you saying Josh do it there?
Yeah, he's doing it the township roads.
Oh, yeah.
You know. The homeowner stuff, all you know, it's, that's where it just gets a little tricky. Just going back to the, some of the issues of water quality we're having in the lake. Not saying that is what it's from, we know that, but. So. What's your feeling on that? I mean. Kinda keep doing what we're currently doing. I do get Megan's point. You know. Or discussions or thoughts on that? Want to just keep it like it is, first come, first served.
I think we should just do that again, another year, first come, first served.
Let's evolve the same amount budgeted for the.
Well, we rate, we raise it to thirty five thousand.
So if there was five townships, I think it's sprayed for this year, but they contacted Josh and he just. Let them know they didn't give me the seven ten thousand. You wanna like, just say for Golden Lake only. Twenty? Cause I mean, that was thirty nine hundred dollars that. I mean, a portion of that could have gone to the township to take care of noxious weeds. I'm just nervous.
Well, the bad thing is we have twenty townships and twenty, twenty townships of two thousand is forty grounds to, we're still short by a ground.
I'm worried that the leafy spurge is gonna be even worse next year. Because we had droughts in twenty twenty one. That had, that has such a expansive root system that it can tap into that moisture. The drought was the end of twenty twenty two. We're just, we've set it up to be super competitive, but they take over the grasses. It might really yellow come next June.
Is it, can we table this and then you guys check to see what other townships do, or excuse me, what other colonies do for spraying?
Um, yeah, it's, I know like first county doesn't.
They don't prepare.
Yeah.
Cause I, I did have one. A farmer reached out to me and. He was mad because he had to spray the town or the county roads. With that money. You know, and I told him, I said, you know. If you do half your township one year, another half next year, and even if you don't do the one county road, that, you know, same year and do it next year. But just alternate it.
But that's the reason why you guys.
Right, I know.
It's to cover, cover the county road.
Yep, I know, but they're still. They weren't happy with it.
Maybe just if Josh could be contacted, Justin would have found those. Well, ever time to be a township, you guys are responsible and you receive township funds to take care of the township.
I think we should do our due diligence and check in with some other colonies, see how they do it and then. Before we make a decision today. Have some background.
So specifically asking. How do you hang out county road spraying, township road spraying? Then you'll, I mean, I don't know for certain, but a lot of these other counties don't use noxious weed funds to take care. Of like. Weeds that don't fall under the noxious weed list.
Do some checking with some other colonies and we have to maybe we'll just skip the whole myself.
Okay, we'll table that till. Next meeting. Megan, would that be somebody you can come and give us a? They don't. I know we've been kinda.
Kind of in battle in this.
Back and forth with that, and I get both sides of it, I, I really do, I. I think it's something nice. Something good that, that we do with county for controlling the weeds. Gives a good incentive to get out there and, and keep the ditches clean, so.
When you, when you, uh. Do that checking, wouldn't you, why don't you bring us a map or? Should let us know what township had been spraying and which ones have them.
Cause Josh sends that in when he. He does his billing, doesn't he have a township case? Alright, Jessica, do you have anything? Anything more? Do I need a motion to adjourn? I think weed board. Second.
Second.
Brandon, seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye. All polls say no. Motion carried. We will move back into the Steel County Commission meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At nine twenty two. Interstate Engineering, Mike.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, morning, night.
Well, for new commissioners, I know Don. Commissioners might pass away with interstate engineer. I've had the privilege to do your county engineering for over fifteen years now. Thought we'd. Bring a map with a little bit of information on it, sometimes it's nice just to have something in front of you to kinda see. Where things have been at and going on. Okay, you guys know. What's been going on in this county anyway, but I just thought it might be useful just to uh, uh. Kinda put it on a map sometimes, it's kinda nice to stick that in your file and, and have some of that information um, per down the road too, so. Um, maybe. First, your, your paved roads, you can see your paved roads are kind of those thicker lines on there and then we show the uh. The year that uh, the last work was done on it, so as of. This year, Connor eleven through. record got a mill and overlay, so that was almost your last pavement that's been addressed in the last ten years. I think Connor Road five is where we started working on some pavement in twenty twelve construction. And you guys had the good fortune of some non oil producing county money um, throughout the legislature for a few years there. So Connor Road eighteen is the only one left that hasn't been. Had any maintenance on in quite some time, that was originally paved and last paved in nineteen ninety five. So we're over twenty five years there on the age of that pavement, so that we, we know that. Uh, if you guys been over that recently, it's gonna need something pretty soon. Um, before you start to go backwards and start to lose that, but. Just for real quick, Connor Road five was a mill and overlay in twenty twelve, Connor Road twenty five was a mill and overlay in twenty fourteen. Then we moved on to uh. Connor Road eight, which was twenty fifteen, so fourteen or Connor Road twenty five and Connor Road eight were both. Non oil producing money from the state that did those, Connor Road five was a bonded project, you guys still have a bond out that you're paying on that. And there was some of your federal aid account that was used for that. Uh, then after that, it was Connor Road twenty three, east of Connor Road eight. And that ended up being a full reconstruction, regrading and new pavement on that. In twenty seventeen and we also did the main bridge over the goose at that time. And twenty eighteen, we moved on to Connor Road twenty three west of eight and got that mill and overlaid. And as part of that project, um, we also did some work down by Hope to uh, um, do some payment into town on the north side of town. And then, like I said, the last project for paving was this year in twenty twenty two, uh, finished this summer. State Highway thirty two east on your nine miles of pavement on Connor Road eleven, got a mill and overlay. So most of your pavement's in pretty good shape, Connor Road eighteen is kinda the one that we'll probably want to talk about a little bit more at. Your January meeting, as you do have some other funding sources coming and we've been talking about it for a couple of years now, so.
Just to put in perspective, I think the Connor Road eleven project cost us like two point one.
Yeah, and since eighteen is just a little bit shorter and we don't have to deal with some bridge issues that we dealt with on eleven. Um, even with the accelerating cost of construction, Connor Road eighteen is also estimated about two point one million dollar project. Um, your, your federal aid funds that we used for Connor Road eleven that paid for eighty percent of that. You had to borrow ahead, three years on that um, for your federal funds, so it's gonna be into twenty twenty five. Before you have any of your annual allotment to federal funds available.
Eighteen gonna be partially federally funded then do?
No, that's we're gonna have to discuss at the next meeting is how you do fund that, because you wouldn't be able to have any federal funding available until twenty twenty five. And then what you get for federal funding, it would take you ten years in order to build up enough federal funding to be able to do anything.
Is that why they prioritized? Uh, County Road or County Road eleven. Over County Road eighteen, cause County Road eleven wasn't in near as bad a shape as County eighteen. Eighteen is in way worse shape, but why did eleven get jumped ahead of eighteen? Is that because of the federal funding?
Nope, nope, cause they're both federal funds eligible routes.
So who determined why we fixed one, which is in not too bad a shape over one that's in.
That was a commission decision to decide which road to go first, um, the hope that there would be funding following to do eighteen. Um, there was expansion to try and do both at the same time.
Eleven wasn't, wasn't in good shape either, Don.
It wasn't that.
No. Actually, at the time, I think we thought eleven was worse than eighteen at the time.
Okay.
Yes.
But then, as we were in the. Probably the middle of getting it done or getting ready to do it. You know, by twenty five, there were some bad patches that we had to get done and sure.
Cause what is, what does the county share of the non oil producing?
All, all of that money from those previous bills have all been, been spent, those were three, three bills um, in the past over the series of, of, of years there. Um, that were funded and spent.
Does that depend on the size of the county? You know, I, I know a little bit about it. But I don't know the specifics of it, but there's gonna be more buckets filled here in January or February.
So that's, that's a different issue that we're getting to here, um, in, in just a moment, a different set of funding, so those. Those three bills were exclusive bills that came through either the House or the Senate in North Dakota, just during the oil boom time when they had some excess money. And they provided a certain dollar amount that was spread among the counties, um, and they typically divide those dollars based on uh, um. The Upper Great Plains, the, um, NDSU, the institute that does your need study, counties in North Dakota. They base it on that study and then split it out based on that, so what you're talking about is prairie dog.
Prairie dog funding.
Right on funding, which is something that we've talked about for eight years now, at least eight years.
Sounds like the way it happened.
And it's actually gonna happen this year, it's anticipated that those buckets will fill yet this month, and then there's either a thirty or sixty day. Something in the legislation that they can't actually disperse that money for thirty or sixty days, so at some point this winter, um. We expect that you'll be able to, uh, um, they will just send that money out, so it will just be deposited in your account for your use on that. So as long as we're talking revenue, just a couple of comments on that and we can talk more specific numbers and some of that stuff. Um, next month too, just kinda wanted to put a primer to this and then start talking about some of the, uh, the bridges that are already programmed and in process. So. In the last legislative session, if you heard about House Bill fifteen oh five. Through fifteen oh five, there was two components to that, one was, uh, that's COVID money from the fastest where that money came from. So they distributed through that, uh, just funding out to the counties, they just put money in your account. Your share of that was a million fifteen thousand. Um, it's my understanding you guys still have that money, you haven't allocated that for anything yet, and then the prairie dog funds. Um, now that those buckets are going to fill the new need study. That I believe they're going to disperse based on uh, that new need study, your allocation has changed a little bit from what we originally thought. Your allocation was gonna be based on the new information I just got recently, that's almost one point seven million is what we're anticipating prairie dog funding. So there's, there's two point seven million anticipated to be in those funds and as we said, Connor Road eighteen uh. Um, is estimated at a two point one million dollar project. Of course, the other side of that is that you have all kinds of other stuff going on too, so. So when I was talking about that House Bill fifteen oh five that provided that little bit over a million dollars. Additionally, with that, there was twenty four million that was set aside to be used for uh, grant applications for bridges, for county bridges. So if you look at this map, there's kind of a, uh, I don't know, light red color east of Hope on Connor Road five. That bridge, um, we submitted and received funding on that bridge. So the nice thing about that particular project is that is a hundred percent funding, they're gonna pay a hundred percent of everything on that. So because we anticipate that's gonna be a box culvert and because of the uh, supply issues with box culverts and not wanting to repave that road. Um, late in the year, we've actually pushed that project back to uh, twenty twenty four construction. Is what we're looking at for that, so that we can bid it in the fall of twenty three uh, for construction in twenty twenty four, cause we, we just know that. Box culverts um, are pushed out well until September, if you order them in December. So if that's a box culvert project, just didn't seem like a great idea to try and accomplish that this year. With that COVID money, it has to be obligated, I believe, by the end of twenty four and spent by twenty six, so we've got a couple of years before that money has to be taken care of. So. Uh, just a little description on this, if you look at the legend down there, um. The uh. But as an example, Southeast, so that Colgate Bridge that you guys were talking about earlier, that one showing is a red X on there because that one's closed. Um, the other bridge that was recently closed is the one in Broadland Township. Uh that's got the red X in there. So those red Xs are closed. Any of the bridges with just the green dots are bridges that are open and unrestricted. The green dots with the yellow around them, those are the ones that are posted for load. So the numbers that are associated with this, we know you have a lot more bridges than this in the county. What Richard was talking about earlier is any bridge twenty feet or longer is eligible for federal funding, and it's also. On their list of inspections. So all these bridges get inspected on a two year cycle and. I could spend another ten minutes talking about how that inspection has changed, because it's done differently now and but they.
Just so you know, there's a written app right there. I think we have about a hundred and fifty bridges.
Yep, so this is an update of that with a few bridges taken off, but you know, some of these bridges have been. Um from the ratings that were done three years ago, the state has looked at those ratings now and actually finished up with those ratings and some of these bridges are newly posted for load. As an example, uh um in Finley Township, that one just east of thirty two, that was just asked to be posted in October, I believe. Um there's a bridge on Connor Road six just straight south of whole posted for ten tons. That was just uh, you were just told by the state that you need to post that for ten tons. So um the state inspects those bridges and basically controls the ratings that you need to do on those and. Um in order to continue to be eligible for federal funds, you kind of have to follow their process on what they need. Yep, we gotta check into that and figure out what's going on with that, because I did not anticipate that.
This one on Connor Road six is ten tons, that one did that change out? So we have a colony road that's down the ten tons.
Yes. Yep, so. It went from unrestricted to ten tons. So I I think the state is recognizing that the old inspection and rating system. Was a little antiquated, so after the uh bridge failure in Minneapolis, they the federal. Side of things updated their bridge inspection and rating. A lot of that stuff changed. Now, when they came out three years ago and started using the new rating system, it's changed some of these bridges. So the good news is, is the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that was passed through Congress last winter. Sets aside a lot of money for bridges, so. Uh that was also an application process through the state. So there are a number of bridges that are showing on here that are already in various stages uh either of design or an RFP is out. To be uh reconstructed or recomplaced replaced here um in twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. So that one in Broadland Township just happens to be that one of the ones that was approved for replacement. Found out that was approved for replacement, I think shortly before the bridge was had to be closed. DOT might have known maybe when we made that application. So the one in Broadland Township and the one in northeastern Finley Township are the two that are quite a ways through the design process and intended to be constructed. Hopefully next year um with the box culvert supply. That may get pushed into uh spring of twenty four or hoping to at least get the Broadland one replaced next year, so we can get that one open. But just so your residents know, that's probably gonna be late fall. By the time we actually get materials to replace that, because the feds have a lot of criteria on what you need to use for materials to replace that. So those two bridges are twenty twenty three. We talked about the one on Connor Road five that uh is slated for twenty four construction. Then west of Hope on Connor Road five, there's actually a bridge that is less than twenty feet. And I've I've been doing your county engineering work for over fifteen years, and I think we've been talking about that bridge longer than I've been here. Um and how to fund replacing that, just simply because it's really in poor condition, but it's not federally inspected, so you can't get federal funds for it. Ben was able to get a FEMA grant for that. So that is also slated for uh um reconstruction in twenty twenty three, because he was able to get that money through FEMA for that. So um we actually have a bid opening next Tuesday to be able to uh purchase the box covers. And then we'll finish up the process of getting the right away and getting the plans and stuff and then hire a contractor next spring. So we'll know next Tuesday um about those box covered, so that we can get those next year and get that one replaced too.
And that was a was that an eighty five?
Actually, no, that one went out, sorry. Yep, so the concern with that, of course, is that that was based on cost estimates from three years ago. So the federal funds on that were somewhat capped at around around six hundred thousand dollars. We anticipate that that's gonna be more than that. So the question will become after we open these bid lettings, does FEMA have any more money? To kick in, or are you guys gonna have to pay a larger share than the percentages that you're talking about too? That's something we don't know.
But we're thinking of maybe up to eight hundred now.
Up to eight hundred thousand, so that. Two point seven million I was talking about before, there's possibly another two hundred thousand that you might need for that particular project too, that would have to come from somewhere. Um if you proceed with it, so.
And I do have a million to talk to the state um he's out to the street, but as soon as he gets back, he'll.
So it's uh some unknowns there, but that's what the schedule is for those. Um you guys are receiving engineering proposals today for uh design on three bridges up in the northeastern part of the county. Uh there's two bridges between Anger and Newburgh. Um where one bridge will be taken out, one bridge will be replaced. And then there'll be a township road to the east that'll be realigned around a farmstead. So since we take one of those bridges out, we'll have more traffic that'll potentially want to go east. So part of that project that uh. Um we're able to secure funding through the uh the uh I JJA funding um for twenty twenty five. And because these projects are all a hundred percent funded, you have to go through the federally process for that. So you actually have to put out a request for proposals to hire an engineer to design those. She designed it, then you bid it through the DOT to get a contractor. And then once you get to construction, you'll have to put out another proposal for an engineer to do the construction records through the process of that. But like I said, the good thing about it is is they're gonna pay um a hundred percent of that. So in addition to those two bridges, there's also a bridge just east of uh County Road eight and Beaver Creek Township. That was put in and accepted as a low water crossing. So it's a bridge that just accesses a farmstead and then goes around up there. Um I forget who lives.
Out of mouse.
Yes, so that that they agreed to fund um for smaller costs to be able to put a little water crossing in. So those three bridges plus the realignment will all go together hopefully as one bit package for construction in twenty twenty five. Um bid in uh hopefully followed before. So it kind of gives you guys some perspective of a lot of stuff going on with a lot of funding that's coming out right now. So on top of that, the DOT has discovered that through this uh um. Bill through Congress that they're still finding out the details from, there is more bridge funding available than what they thought. So just this week, late last week, uh they sent out an email to all the counties that they're taking applications for more bridge replacements. I don't know how much money they have and what the opportunities are, but you guys fared pretty well with the last go around with it. Those are due January eighteenth. So what I wanted to do today was just kind of start the conversation of uh what you guys would think. The best bridges to put in for that funding would be. So they do have fairly specific criteria with that, and one thing that they're. Their their main push with this is that they want to get um bridges that are in poor condition or. As as this map calls it, the red dots that are showing is structurally deficient. And then also load posted bridges. Those are the two highest priority things that they look at for this funding. The other thing that they're pushing is uh they would like to see. Alternatives to just full replacement. So they're pushing uh. Is it possible that you have any bridges out there that you can just do some rehabilitation on and get rid of the load posting on? Now, one thing that they would love is if you just remove the bridge, because that wouldn't cost them very much at all, but they'll pay a hundred percent cost to just removing that bridges, which of course is very popular, but. You add some of those things together and sometimes it enhances your ability to be able to get some of those funding, those twenty twenty five bridges that I just talked about. To be able to do that little bit of road and lower the bridge and then take out a bridge that's a potentially a two million dollar bridge to replace. Helped you score better, I think, to be able to get the money to replace the other one. So just some of those kind of things to think about um. It's not a hundred percent for all bridges. The other thing to keep in mind is that if it's on a federal aid county road. It's goes back to the regular eighty twenty um cost split. So you would pay twenty percent of that. So like, for example, that that bridge on Connor Road five east of Hope. If that would have came through this funding, you would have had to pay twenty percent of that. But because it was COVID funding, they pay a hundred percent. All these other ones that we listed for twenty three and twenty five are a hundred percent because they're not on a counter. So just something to think about. The good thing is. You don't have a whole lot of those red dots left after some of these are replaced. The bad part about that is those are the ones that probably rank the highest for replacement, so.
What's the cost versus replacing the bridge with replacing it with a culvert?
So um we, that's that's part of what we do through the design process is when we do the hydraulic study through the design process. We come up with various alternatives, um looking at those different things and comparing costs, and then we sit down with you and we talk about that to see what's most reasonable. But obviously, the ones in the Goose River up in the northeastern part of the county. Not gonna get a cover to work in there. Those are pretty much have to be, just because of the amount of flow that comes from the Goose River. You know, the other ones we're talking about, those will all be. Just because um that's the uh, you know, the the flow that comes through those works and those particular. Put in those less expensive structures, but even for box cover to any size. Know your total cost of the project could still be almost a million dollars. These bridges that we used to do for a million dollars, like over the Goose River, now probably two million dollars. It's just construction cost escalation is really just just been incredible.
So Mike, do you have select bridges out that that? Quantifying that that funding portion that that we would apply for.
So I unless these guys are aware, I'm not aware of any at this point that uh are probably very good candidates for rehabilitation. Um the problem is, is when these bridges get to be sixty, seventy, eighty, a hundred years old. By the time you actually rehabilitate them to meet the federal standards, you basically replaced them. So it's just really hard. I mean, if you've got old timber abutments or something, it's you can't just. Take the deck off and put a new deck on, you've got timber abutments, still can't support the load and are still gonna be load restricted. We talked about that. Wind loss bridge up there. That's what that was, is that was old concrete abutments that we put in the deck on. Now, for some reason. They need to check into it, because it just doesn't seem right to me, but they're considering that to be load restricted, even though we've got a brand new deck on it.
What are they talking about putting alone to?
I did not get a chance to uh check into that. I don't know if you've got the paperwork with that they they suggested thirty one times. So. So not to talk you out of trying to do rehab, because rehab's gonna score higher and it's easier to get, but I'm just not aware at this point that there are in the bridges that that look like. Good candidates for rehab. You only have. One bridge left, I believe, with the red dot in it that won't be addressed by other things that we're doing, and that's the one in Primrose Township. Over the south branch of the Goose River. I think that one's kind of way off in the woods there somewhere. Um I know previous commissions have looked at that and didn't put a high priority in that. So what that really does is probably dials you back to looking at um load restricted bridges.
They have a three ton, six ton. Bridges.
That's that's an important one. That's an important, that's gonna be.
So when you put in these applications, you're looking for a way to sell it. You know, what 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 can you convince them why it's an important bridge to fund over some other county's bridge? That one on six seems to be a fairly obvious one to me, since it's on a numbered county road, even though it's not a federal aid route. So that one, to me, would make good sense to apply for that one, be a reasonable chance with that. The other one I look at is that by replacing that bridge in Finley Township, the hope there was is to be able to create. Um a an unrestricted off system road all the way from thirty two. Over to County Road nineteen, past County Road eight. Well, that was all a good plan until they restricted that bridge off of thirty two. So before we'd convinced them to fund that bridge um that one eleven oh eight. Or one twelve oh eight, I'm not sure which one that is on the map, but uh to fund that one based on that idea is that it give you a. Off system road between two hundred and Connor Road twenty three that connects with between the state highway and Connor Road nineteen. Well, if they took that as a reasonable way to fund that, I'm wondering if putting that twenty one ton. On that list, you know, it'd be a bad idea either if that's something that we can convince them that we need that now, because you. We thought we had this unrestricted off system route and now it's not. So those are the two that come to my mind, but if you guys want to spend a little time thinking about this and you know, if you want to talk to some townships. If you have some other thoughts, um we can talk about this at the January commission meeting too, since the applications aren't due until uh January eighteenth. Going through a lot of stuff today, so didn't didn't think it was probably a good idea to make someone's decisions today, but. Just wanted to give you that primer that that's something we're gonna have to have put together pretty soon. Still have a lot of bridges that have load restrictions on them, and it seemed like every time the DOT does a rating, you get one more, so.
How often do they check them? Is it annually?
They're inspected every two years, but the load rating doesn't happen every two years. So a lot of your bridges were actually up for inspections this year. Um load ratings that are coming is because the consultant that was doing the uh load ratings from two years ago was a little bit behind. So that's why some of the load ratings are coming out. So I should clarify that. My company didn't do load ratings two years ago. We're we're doing the inspections this year, so. That's the DOT decided they didn't have staff to do that, so they they broke the states in four quadrants and hired consultants to do bridge inspections. So we didn't get to do the load ratings this time. We just did the inspections.
Great.
Lot of stuff there, I don't know.
A lot of stuff was training period last two months or house.
Yeah, yeah, there's been a lot of bridges that have been restricted in the last couple of months. You gotta be getting close to the end of the cycle.
More questions, Mike? You got anything more?
Nope, just wanted to give that primary, I talked about need and put that uh application in. We've got a couple of. Other things that uh we need to get uh. Established to keep some of these things going forward uh. And we have that bid letting next Tuesday, so uh you guys, I heard this morning that she scheduled the meeting on the twentieth. So it would be good to have it on that agenda to be able to, um assuming we get good bits for those box corners to be. Or that and get those orders, so we can really get those next year.
Very nice map.
GIS stuff.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yep, thank you. So I'm always available for phone call too, if I threw too much stuff at you and you guys have questions, but um go give me a call too.
Road Department, Reed.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yep, you bet. Thanks.
What I'd like to. Bring up with is uh on the or bleeding or summer bleeding and or winter bleeding. Uh right now, we're at a hundred and five dollars an hour. Um I checked with the. With the other. People that are bleeding within our town, in our county and they're like one twenty five, one twenty eight. One twenty. And uh I think uh we should raise our. I'm suggesting that we would raise our bleeding per hour in the summer and the winter as one twenty. And uh. Have to make that decision and stuff.
Um so. What the fuel increases and everything and that's just. January one.
January one, and then we'll send the letter on to the townships. Or an email.
So we'd need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion to increase the. Bleeding rates.
I got a motion to increase uh bleeding rates, so one twenty. Uh Brandon, second, all in favor, signify by. Uh Brandon, second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Alright.
All opposed, say no. Back to.
It's um and then also um. Like to thank you. The board members. The basis um and uh. We'll be a lot of projects this summer. Any questions you guys have?
Not right now.
No, we don't.
But I can certainly get together with him. You can you can give me an uh update on a lot of stuff.
Good. It's a really good thing to hop into there and go for a ride. I mean, just just honestly to get to get the gist, so.
That's I've enjoyed that, yeah.
So I mean, if you guys got any questions, uh I think I might have. Oh, we have period number. I think I have, but we'll get it. And any questions, you guys just call me anytime. The great now my guys are running the blacktop this morning. There was only like. Mostly found maybe a happy inch, you know, a little bit of accumulation. We did run on Saturday morning. We ran we ran the the blacktop and stuff. Uh last Saturday, so my guys, uh they don't. They just come in and get it done. So but if you guys are out on the road, you see something, give me a call. And and stuff. Here it is um and we have uh. We'll we'll need to look at, I would say, uh towards the end of two thousand twenty-three uh. Probably. Putting together uh the bid package and stuff for a new motor radiator. Uh two thousand twenty-five, that is when uh our last uh machine. Uh it's gonna be have no more warranty left on it in two thousand twenty-five, so.
Well, we do a one machine that doesn't have warranty now.
Right, that we do have one that's not a warranty right now. Uh the of our three full-time blades um in that. New motor radiator is supposed to be here, supposed to be in this. Into uh fall flow in February to get the wing and in the front lift and stuff on it uh by. Projected like the fifteenth of March, we should have that machine and. In in here, so and that is a new cat, the one fifty, um and we have one of them right now. Um. And then uh the two thousand eighteen, that is the one that we would be uh looking at creating in uh in two thousand twenty-five.
Is that kind of our criteria then that we keep them as long as there's a warranty on them?
Yeah.
And then when that expires, we.
Would like to get rid of it before the, you know, click now on this last on here um. Just uh in October, it went down. The hydraulic pump went out of it. And uh it sat in Fargo for. Hmm three weeks at least, and he could not give me an answer on on availability of parts.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Finally, I went over as that guy's. Had and talked to his boss and I said, I need an answer because I. I need to give it to my board on what definite timeline or so they come up with a time. They said December sixth. They would have the machine uh parked in in back to us. I got a phone call that following week said that that part showed up. That Friday, they got it in the machine. We have uh and I got that laid back home again. And uh was in record time and then I called. My board members and said, we have it back in Steel County, so because we run four blades in in a winter. And uh the one extra blade, we just use use that for helping uh. You know, it really makes a big difference. Uh running gravel and stuff in the winter time, get all one machines out there to get the trucks up, you know, till we can get over everything. Uh you know, and even touch into some townships, the bus routes and stuff uh within our eight hours.
How many blades do we have total, man?
Four.
We have four. Yeah, four blades total, okay.
We run four blades in the winter time for snow and two truckloads.
Okay, good, yep.
And most all our equipment is pretty old.
Okay.
We have a couple blades that are pretty new, a new New York skid steer, but everything else is. Pretty old.
Yep.
Really old.
Yeah, I would. I seen most of it, yeah.
The our gravel trucks, that's gonna be one couple things they're gonna need to be updated. You know, they're they're ninety to ninety-nine and that two thousand.
Our gravel trailers are seventy-nine and eighty.
Yeah, I mean, we replaced all the parts, all the brakes. I mean, the gravel trailers. I mean, that they're pretty simple to fix, you know, but uh. But they're all water and stuff like that, uh you know, so. Later on, I'll be talking to you guys about.
Definitely something to think about.
Yeah.
So you have anything else?
I'd like to take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Uh. Make a motion. Five-minute recess, I got a motion. Do I got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Don, seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Also no.
You got one of these, Richard? I did not.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's two more here.
Okay, are we all back? The mic's on. We'll reconvene the Steel County Commission meeting at ten oh two. Ben.
Uh so several road stuff. So for you new commissioners, uh part of my job is the bookkeeper office manager or Haley, you wanna call up for the road department? Um we do uh I do a lot with the um. Daily sheets that the guys submit, that payroll, all that stuff. On top of that, you get a lot of reports from me that get emailed out. Um I did send you guys all an email yesterday. I pulled this for the latest of that, but it it winds up being a late email, but that's all the reports that I send out to you as an email or. Um in that packet that you have, so that includes the rate tracking information that the road department does as well as our monthly uh things that we do. As far as like storm removal, cattail moving, bleeding, et cetera. So all that information is in there. Um with your uh guys, any dot gov, we know, so start getting those sent to you there. Uh just with the timing of everything, it winds up coming to you in a separate email from me. It uh it usually can't come in your general commissioner packet just because we have to wait until the first of the month. In order to run a lot of those reports and a lot of times that uh commission packet, like it's such a TV, it just do well. So that's the timing of that. Um I always put in that email. If you have any questions on the reports, Reed knows exactly what's going on. I would call Reed with any of those. Questions that you may have. Um next thing we're going to, and Mike alluded to it, um talking about the FEMA bridge that Connor with five uh bridge lessons. West Oak. Um we are opening uh bids next week on the thirteenth. So at ten AM, uh my question to you guys is, it's not required for any of you commissioners to be there. Um would one of you like to be here? Uh while we open bids, basically what we'll do is we'll just open bids. It's not a formal commission meeting. We're just gonna give them all. Mike, he's gonna do the final tallying and lots of with it, but uh. Would anybody like to be here to attend? Any um thirteen.
I can be here.
Okay. Would you send me? I will make sure you guys get an email. Yes, I'm I'm yeah. I think it'll be um. That being said, and I will send an email to Emily Carly, but that'll need to be on your guys' agenda for the twentieth, then uh that will be more than that. Are those bits? I get them. So we'll talk about that again in your next meeting. Um the next thing that I have for you guys is, and Mike talked about this as well. We sent out a request for proposal uh for these bridges that we're doing in on twenty twenty-five. Uh just to get the process started, uh we found that starting the federal aid process sooner rather than later is a benefit to us. As well as benefit to the contractors. Nobody else is gonna wind up hitting on it, so um what we did is we sent out in our. I'll back up. So what we have to do with every federal aid project, we have to start with an RFP for preliminary engineering. So we send out for the design engineering, all that's gonna work, et cetera. Um as a commission, you guys formulated committee, we established interview dates with any of those uh entities that uh submitted for the RFP. And then we interviewed those those people, so we go through the there's questions at the state that requires us to ask. Um we go through that process. From there, um that committee submits a recommendation back to the full board. For their uh approval on who we should go with for our design engineer. Uh the same process happens once we get the bid out, once we have to start with the construction engineering, we go through that exact same process. So we have to uh send out an RFP for the construction engineering. You guys establish a committee to. Do some interviews, you do the interviews, come back with a recommendation to the full board, et cetera. That committee normally has consisted of uh myself and Reed from the road department, two commissioners and the county auditor. Normally, you guys can change that as well as what you guys want to do um. So what we have out there is RFP for the twenty twenty-five bridges. This is for the preliminary design engineering uh for those bridges that we're gonna wind up doing. We have run it. Um everything is due to us by uh I think four o'clock today. I've already received a couple. And I anticipate receive at least two more, so um we interview top three is what we wind up interviewing. Um great. Yeah, we're gonna run. Top three in our traction. So um what I would like from you guys today is a decision on um. Number one, establishing that interview committee and then picking interview dates. Um timing comes into play here with when we're talking about interview dates. If this is something that you guys would like to get done at your next commission meeting on the twentieth. We can definitely move those interview days up. I have talked to the couple that I've received already and they are willing to meet next week uh to discuss, to have those interview days. They're willing to to do whatever needs to be done so that a decision could be made at your December twentieth meeting, if that's something that doesn't work for you guys. Um and we can always push that back to your January. So I guess that's my question. Do you want on the committee and then um with as a committee, we need to talk about dates in time.
I can. I'll be on the committee.
I can do.
So that's my two commissioners.
One of you guys want to.
All you guys were the road guides, so I guess that makes sense. To go on that.
Um so that's my two commissioners. Um I would recommend myself and Reed as the other as from road department. He was okay with that.
Yep.
Um and then there is uh room for one, who would you like? It normally has been the county auditor. I don't know if you want points, uh Carly or or it's a TV. We tend to do even number or odd numbers for the sake of the time and the. Bring in.
You wanna do it, Carly?
No.
Good.
Um. What we could do is we could appoint Tim.
Point two.
Okay, so that committee I have uh Brennan, Kurt, Richard, myself, Reed and Tim from Royal Park. You guys comfortable with that committee? Okay, um then that leads to discussion. Uh do you guys want to meet you two, I guess, while you're here? Do you want to meet next week and and get those decisions?
Yeah, let's get it. Let's get it going.
Um is there a specific date and time that works best for you guys? Don't shake your head, no, I need it. Tuesday, Wednesday, fine afternoon work, okay? So um can we do Wednesday afternoon? Start at one PM. Down in the basement. What I want one PM start.
It's the thirteenth. Fourteenth, fourteenth.
So Mike, you're comfortable first?
Yeah, okay.
Start with Mike and then we'll do our time slots, so we'll uh.
Fifty-nine and last one to forty-five minutes.
We need four minutes.
That's fun.
Forty-five minutes, yeah, okay. I will uh send the. Send out to everybody else too, once we get the files. I'll confirm email, email to you guys tomorrow. Okay. Awesome. Thank you for that. Uh. Actually, the last thing I had for you guys was this county maintenance uh certification that we received and Carly, I think, has a copy signed from Emily. Um that does need to be circulated to uh Charlie Reed and Brandon. Um basically, it's just saying that we have inspected all our county roads. They're giving me condition as a annual thing that we do. It doesn't require formal or anything, but it's just a piece of your guys' inside. That is it for road unless you want.
This one, yeah.
Any questions for me? For me or Mike? Broke stuff. We threw a lot at you guys today, I understand that, so.
Now we're on to DS.
DS.
Generator follow-up.
Yeah, um so generator follow-up. We. Yeah, so generator follow up, we, and I, I believe this was included in your guys' commissioner packets. We did all the load testing and everything on the generator, so that's all been completed, hundred percent ready to go.
We just got a new generator for you guys.
Yeah, so. We now have, I asked them to put together some maintenance agreements, stuff for us. Couple different options for you guys and. I, we wanted, I wanted to discuss it basically, but. Doing an inspection or having somebody else or having Butler come in and maintain it, I think is probably the best way to go with it. There's two different options that Butler proposed, there's one that they do a low test annually and one without a little testing. You can talk about it as much as you want, I'm gonna explain it first, then I'll get to my. I already almost gave Richard a personal access, but. So, a lot of different thoughts come to mind when you talk about load testing generator, right? And I'm assuming you guys are aware of that. When. When Hurricane Harvey hit on Houston, there's two level one trauma centers in Houston. Both of them have for many, many years done all their annual testing, their monthly testing, et cetera. When it came to their generators, when it came time for the generators to work into work, as long as they needed to work, they didn't. For a variety of reasons, a lot of it was as they just never got tested and they never got load tested for as long as they should have been load tested before. So, and all the classes and all the trainings and everything that I've ever done shows that any critical infrastructure should have a generator load tested at least once a year. So my recommendation to you guys is gonna be to go with that maintenance agreement, that's the more expensive one, it's like twenty-four ninety-five every six months. I did get some annual plans and I did get a painful plan. All of that to be said, it is included in my grant and I do have grant funding for it for this year. I would like to pay it all in full for five years or five years, so it's, it's, we're all paying full for the next five years. It's twenty-one thousand nine forty-five. Twenty-one thousand nine forty-five. This is the. Agreement, if you guys want to.
So that's a five-year program.
Five years.
For twenty-one thousand, you gotta pull around for that.
Correct. It's part of the generating.
And that's paid for. Yeah. But. No brainer, he, he came to my office one day and told me that it's gonna be twenty, thirty grand, he told me, and he, he wanna do, I said, you're nuts.
Yeah. A lot of expletives were.
We, we wanted a generator probably for, ever since I've been on the board, plus before the board, I mean, before I've been on them.
I think this is the best way to go to keep it maintained to the level that it needs to be maintained at, as well as do the.
I'll make a motion that we accept your, your plan.
Better, Richard, with a motion, do I got a second?
I'll second that.
Very seconds, any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Oppose, say no. All can carry.
Then what's the size of our new generator?
One twenty-five K to.
Hundred and twenty-five K.
It's not enough, it's not enough to run the heat to.
No, no, oh, no, no, that takes, that takes a lot.
We looked at that and that just wasn't cost effective.
But we're off peak anyway, so our heat should last us a while, even in a power outage.
Couple, two, three days.
Yeah. But where the generator are gonna be mounted?
It's already, it's already, okay, it's on the west side of the courthouse, really, or, or. The world was the worst side.
Wider than the others. It right now, it starts twice, twice a month. We're, they run for a half hour, it, which is over, it runs, it runs the four home. For twenty-five minutes. Then it puts back, it does a six-minute cooldown and then it's very hard.
What type of fuel is it? Even sort of, okay, thank you so long, we use that.
We have that whole, we're gonna do the other generator, we're gonna end up. Probably putting it under our trust there.
That's just a question I was gonna ask, is what about the old generator? Okay. Is it over there right now then? Okay.
It didn't need to be wired in.
Sure.
Okay, Ben, you got radio purchases.
Yeah, okay, so, thank you for that, appreciate that. Yeah, thank you, appreciate that. So, yeah, I wrote this up and I'll pass this out to you guys, but just kind of an update of what's going on in my office. You know, we're managing a lot, managing a lot of grants, doing a lot of stuff, one of the things that I'm not, I know Vio is aware of it, I know Don's a little bit aware of it, period. I'm not sure how are you are with the new radio project that's going on throughout the state. Maybe a little bit.
A little bit, I hear about it all the time.
So, there's a statewide interoperability of radio network that is going into play. It was approved by the state legislature several years ago, it's been a probably seven-year process, right? Through that process, we've had to allocate funding to replace. New radios, new consoles at the dispatch centers, so we share a dispatch center with Trail County, over Hillsboro. We've had to cost share with a lot of that stuff, we've also had to supply the sheriff's office with brand new radios in order for that to work on this new system. So, we're fairly well covered, at least with the sheriff's office. What I'm, what I'm asking for you guys here is to use some of that additional COVID money that we've had before to purchase some more radios to get us one hundred percent ready to go. So. I didn't include any portables in here, these are just for. Truck radios, so what we want to do is we want to put. The bander radio into my truck. My county pickup, which would need to be. Encrypted, because it's a fourth law enforcement vehicle, Wayne uses it for his guys all the time for various occasions. So that my truck radio has to be encrypted, there's an additional cost with it. Thing, and we can get into that later, it's not. The other two are going to be two mobile radios to put in our two trailers or two emergency response trailers that we have, so we can. Fully do our emergency response and services work. Total cost of these radios is fourteen thousand forty-one dollars and eighty cents, that's one four zero four one. You've utilized some of that COVID money before for these radios, my ask is this, so. Few months ago, I came to you guys and said, hey, there, I got about fifty thousand dollar radios, this goes above and beyond that by about four thousand dollars, so. Wanted to talk to you guys about that, Wayne, do you have anything to add?
I just walked out.
Talking about the adding the three radios, my truck and the two trailers.
Yeah.
Anything now?
Do you have any? Do you have any money in your budgets anywhere?
Just with, so getting these radios and getting them installed has taken anywhere from six to fourteen months. So. It's supply is really depending on that, and when it's still gonna get them installed, I wanted to talk to you guys about it before I did anything, because. I just don't know when they come in.
Do we have money left on that?
There is money in that COVID fund, yeah.
How often do these get upgraded, it seems like all.
Yeah, so we've, we've been on for a long time, radios didn't get touched for about fifteen years, maybe, as I say.
Yeah.
And that's, that's way too long for a lot of these radios, these radios probably should be updated, seven years is probably end of life for a lot of these radios. And I was talking into service, I'm trying to end the life, like, we need to be constantly working through that process, so. These radios are a little bit more tougher, we should be able to get just the. The amount that we use, that I use them, is little compared to like the sheriff's office where they use them every day, right? So, we're gonna be working through a schedule to get, make sure that these, if these are updated, that they're updated on a better schedule than what they have before. All this being said, we do get a state grant back, so there is a fifteen hundred dollar reimbursement per radio that we get back with these, so. You're talking forty-five hundred dollars back on these radios.
Did you figure, did you figure that in the fourteen?
Yes, no. This is. That's my ask. You don't have anything, I don't know if you don't want to, but we do need to get those ratings replaced at some point, so it can be a budget thing for next year, if you'd rather, oh, what I was gonna say is. Why it wasn't a budget, shouldn't be a budget thing for next year, is we are, Finley signed last night, city of Finley signed an agreement with the state to put up the new tower. Out at the base, so that's gonna happen next spring, next summer, so we're actually gonna be switching over to this new system next summer. So, these radios will need to be installed, will need to be ordered at least well before that, so that's the idea of getting them, ordering them now, so they can install.
Are we putting a new tower up?
They are, but the state is putting a new tower, they're putting a red bull rate south of ours. So our equipment will still be here, we'll still have the plan is to keep our old VHF equipment, it's all legacy stuff, as long as it works, we're gonna find a keeping it. Door department uses it, school buses use it, et cetera, we're not gonna put any extra money into it, we don't have to, but as long as it works, we're probably gonna use it. Until it doesn't, but the state is putting in a new shelter, new tower, et cetera. So if something does happen to our tower or our equipment, we can move our stuff onto their stuff at no extra cost, that was in the agreement.
You can put your own generator up.
I think as long as we have COVID funds, we should purchase those radios using those funds.
So, to that point, what we've, what we've done before, practice that we've had before, is that anything that's gonna benefit the county as a whole. This winds up benefiting the county as a whole, is the emergency services side of.
Absolutely. We need a motion for that.
Yes.
Make a motion that we use COVID funds to purchase the additional radios that Ben has outlined.
Have a motion from Don, do I have a second? Have a second.
Second.
Brandon, seconds. Any further discussion? Are you no discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say no. All can carry. Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, guys, is that all you had? I'm just gonna pass this out, if you guys want to take one ambassador on. We have, that's kind of my office update for you guys, especially commissioners. If you have any questions, comments. Please.
Here's one thing you guys will find about Ben, he's always expensive.
That is expensive.
I always knew that.
I've lost the meetings. Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as we got some of the paper, we don't find.
A lot of times we have, I have funding sources to help you, but not all of it.
Sometimes you gotta ask them if it's a need or a want.
That's right.
Yes, there are those questions too. So, any questions for me? Congratulations to you three, Joe, congratulations to all you guys.
Thank you.
Fun several years having you guys on.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks.
Thank you much.
Are you?
Next on the agenda, we got Connor. Rick out there.
He was.
Morning, Rick.
Good, good.
Yeah, I know, last meeting, we were discussing. Budget. Budget concerns with the corner position. Correct me if I'm wrong, Richard.
Yep.
That's kind of what we were.
So. Okay, let me open that up first. So Rick's the coroner for the Steel County. Last year, he got paid roughly thirty-two hundred dollars and he requested seven thousand dollars. We did a lot of budget cutting, we did finally end up putting five thousand in there. As we wrote it in there, but we didn't decide if we were gonna do that for sure. Couple previous commissioners. Wanted also to bump up some hourly employees at the same time, and also we have a. The second guy in charge wanted a raise as well, we didn't do that. But. With Rick's job, it's, it's, it's a job that nobody wants.
What's the currently being paid for that job?
Thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two hundred.
Roughly.
Annually.
Yeah.
Okay. And what are we looking at?
We look, we, we wrote into five thousand.
Okay.
So with, you know, we had a lot of talk and we kind of left it open right now, we left it at five thousand. We didn't decide if we're gonna do that for sure.
Yep.
And so we asked Rick to come to this meeting and kind of explain some more and really be good for you guys to hear. Oh, you can imagine what a coroner job is.
Not for seven years.
Not many people want that job.
When's the last time the payment had been changed on the coroner? It's always been thirty-two hundred bucks.
I think it's only gone up, just the annual increase yearly, Don could broadly speak to some of that too, maybe.
Yeah, I wasn't getting. Couple hundred dollars a month, I think I was getting like two fifty a month for coroner, so it wasn't. It, it wasn't a lot, and then, like Rick said, cost of living is about all that was ever adjusted on those salaries. And I spent a long time doing that, so.
Typical calls, we, I talked to Rick last night for half hour, so we were talking about things and typically it's how many calls a year?
It varies, I mean, I think last year was seven, some years it's three, some years it's one. It's kind of all over the place, so. I think seven's the most since I started doing it. What, sixteen, seven was probably the most.
What?
You want?
Are you, are you calling it every, unaccompanied death or every death or?
Well, yeah, pretty, pretty much any unattended death, whether that's a car accident, suicide. Elderly person dies in their home. I'm going to all those, so.
But the only ones you aren't required to go to are hospice.
Right, if it's a hospice, they might call me and I'll, they'll tell me they're on hospital, they'll say, okay.
Yes.
Just go ahead.
Otherwise, any other unattended death, coroner's required to be there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add a, that. I think it's helpful. You know, when they're asking you the things, they have a. Of course, the training person being cornered. And one case where, and it was pretty important that it was. That it made a crime scene.
Yeah.
Can be. So what happens, Rick, if you're near. How's it designated, will you, there's a corner, is it?
Um, you know, yeah, there's calls where I'm on duty when I show up and I just kind of. Kind of, it's a. It's a kind of dual role sometimes.
Change hats.
Yeah.
Or if there's, there's other law, there's other than that.
Right, then they kind of, and usually. Some of them, yeah, there's gonna be somebody else there and they can kind of handle that side of it, I can just take care of the corner, so.
Definitely a benefit to have a law enforcement train coroner that. No question about that. I've been to several calls that I can remember that turned out to be a coroner call and wound up to be a crime. And required criminal investigation and. One case was actually a homicide.
So I guess with, with my feeling on it. We can, we get into, it's coming from the commission side, employee side, Rick, it's. Understandable that there are different jobs up here that require different pay, would you say that statement would be correct?
Yeah.
Up here in the courthouse in general.
Yeah.
Okay. So. Sometimes. That doesn't get seen that way. Get what I'm saying, and as commissioners, you guys will hear all about it. I do, I do believe that too, one hundred percent. Every job, everybody's job appears important, no doubt. Keeps county functioning. Where we get into the fuzzy or gray area is when, okay, yes. This person wants a raise, this person wants a raise, this person, but then this one over here didn't get it. And then that's where we get. The flack back or and or. I one hundred percent understand that there is different jobs up here that nobody wants to do, I don't want to do that. But we need somebody to do that.
The other side of the coin is also that if we do not have a coroner at all, that position falls to the sheriff automatically.
Yes.
So we could get a corner for nothing if we decide to. Have the sheriff handle all the corner calls. And that's something that we need to discuss with Wayne too and say that, he says, I don't, you know, I don't want that job.
Yes.
So that's something that I think we should have a conversation.
Somebody remember, none of you guys here. The reason that we started, so we had a corner for years, Dr. Posner did our corners, my first game, he did it. He didn't want any pay, he's from here, he wanted to put that, great guy. He retires. So, yes, we acted out of our own corner, but then we started out at the funeral home, so that they can put the bodies.
Yep.
The reason that we went through all.
The reason that we went through our own corner again is that was very, very expensive. Very expensive.
Yes.
Thousands of dollars.
Yeah, we had, remember, that's what generated me accepting that.
That's why we.
Yep.
In the long run, no matter what you decide and pay a little bit more, I'm hoping you're gonna do. Still standing as far as.
Absolutely.
We're not trying to, we don't have to, we can, there's there's other ways around that, maybe all pretty good.
To me, to me, that's that's not the issue.
Well. That's why we went.
I I.
The background, why we switch, went back to having our own camp in our department.
I just, I just want it stated here that. As long as we do understand that. You guys all understand that. Moving forward.
See, one of the things that I talked to Brandon about uh here a while ago was that uh and that was one of the things that I. Basically promised I was gonna do if I was elected is do a salary study. On all of this stuff, on the entire county uh employment uh history. And I want to do a reasonable, detailed salary study and structure to find out. Where we are with salaries and like Brandon said, pretty difficult when you give. One person a salary raise, I've had that question asked to me already uh in the first, you know. Week of being a commissioner, someone said, why and? Why in this year did three employees get raises and nobody else did? Well, and I don't have an answer for that. And I think as a commission, we've got to be fair to people. One of our biggest assets is our employees. Valuable asset we have.
And this is happened, this isn't a raise for what you're currently doing, it's I mean, it's a separate, it's a separate duty. Being a corner. He is doing it already though.
That's what he's doing already. But it's a position that you give a raise to and somebody else is gonna say, well, why didn't I get a raise from my position?
So that's that's what.
That's where.
Yeah.
But that isn't.
That's true.
That's why.
This year we. Hey, it's it's a significant increase, you can agree that. Exposing for three years. It's not gonna have to get to the normal whatever increase on the which is maybe. Next year that way. Your loss is a little bit.
Yeah. Another option too is that we could say, well, let's establish a rate per call. Then if he has seven calls in one year. He gets paid extra money for those for that workload. If he has no calls for that year, then. You know, do we just do a retainer or what? So that's another option to think about. It doesn't mean that, that's what.
So right now, we're we're sitting at the top out of five K for corner. So we need to make a decision of what we're gonna do there.
Or do you want to wait till I finish my study? We shouldn't take that long.
It's more fuel.
And that will.
We've mostly previously been thinking about raising it up to five thousand, if you budgeted five thousand, you pour it and sold, right?
Came out, we ended with seven, correct?
Came in seven, we lowered it to five thousand and we just thought we'd leave it there because you can't adjust it after.
Can't go higher.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And we always we settled, put it at five thousand. And we'll, we gotta discuss it, that's where we, that's where we left it.
So what are you guys? Thinking, yes, it's kind of.
I think it can be raised, so I would make the motion to raise it to five thousand per year.
Got a motion from Perry. I need a second.
I can second that.
Don seconds it. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Uh call the vote of uh. All in favor say signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, or sorry. Uh all those against, say no. Motion carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Good day.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Deputy Quarter Treasure Tobacco Coordinator. Coordinator, are we gonna discuss that?
Um. I think we're gonna leave it the same for right now and then do further research on that.
We're gonna. We're gonna leave that uh.
They did meet yesterday, but uh we're gonna do a little more research.
Okay. Let's leave it at that then. Um tax director.
Hopefully we.
Come on in, Amy.
Morning.
Morning, morning.
Um all I have for tax is the um proposed modifiers for um soils. For the county, they have to be approved every year.
And that's what NDSU proposes, right? Or they said.
This is what the county.
Okay.
Um we don't have values yet from NDSU, those are probably get within the next month.
Okay.
Um and then that's what I'll base the value off of, but the soil modifiers is just an extra. Basically discount off of certain soil types.
Has anything changed?
Nope, everything's, I think these have been in place for at least the past fifteen years. Same modifiers. Um yeah, I don't know if any of you were able to look at them. The new ones.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Richard, do I got a second? All second, Barry seconds. Any other further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carried.
Yep.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else for me I should say before soon? Nothing else.
I can't think of anything, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is Leslie here?
She's for eleven, I think.
Eleven.
Should we just do Wayne now?
Wayne.
Since he's right here.
Fast and furious. The first thing I'm gonna ask, uh gonna ask for is that um on Friday, the twenty thirty December. I'd like the courthouse to close at one P M. Reason of doing that is more than I did a little. Talking to everybody, almost everyone in the courthouse is gonna be gone. They're all taking vacation. I only know of two people gonna be left in the courthouse for sure. No, one more depending on my vacation. If not, I'm gonna, we're gonna lock the doors at one, either way, because if there's only two people, then they're not gonna have the portals. Uh they can call, you get in if they need an appointment. So that's up to you guys, I don't care what you do, it doesn't bother me, but. I've got a couple coming out and I did a little poll last week and that's what I came up with, so. Because Corso is closed Monday. But. Some people are leaving, no school, all that.
Richard with motion, do I have a second?
Ready.
Second.
Brandon seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carried, courthouse closes noon on the twenty third.
Thank you. The second thing I'm gonna, and this is nothing to vote on today. But I needed, I want to talk to you guys about, we're in a historic area here because I've been in county government for almost forty years. And I've never seen a turnover like this, which is. Fine. But I think you guys need to think about going to two meetings a month. Uh this one probably won't be that bad, maybe the next one, they already, I heard you're already gonna have another meeting this month. And I know that's havoc with some of you guys get full-time jobs and sorry about that, but kind of do that going in, but that's what I'm always told, so. Anyway, so think about, I'm not expecting an answer, I don't need an answer for that, but. If if later on you guys are gonna be every eight, nine hours a day, it kind of throws havoc in this courthouse when you guys are here that long, so. I'm gonna, almost every other county has two. So some of those second meetings are only an hour or two long sometimes, so if you can get it down to. If you've got a lot of, uh I know you have a lot of roadwork coming up, you can just do one meeting just with that roadwork and if something pops up, of course, you throw it in the agenda.
Yeah.
But I think you really need to think about that, but I don't expect people.
Yep.
I've never seen this before, so it's.
Yep. So that's all, that's all I got, thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you.
Oh, you have any other?
Should we do the number ten, West Trail Ambulance twenty-three agreement? So we have a contract with West Trail Ambulance every year. It's a ninety thousand dollar contract, I think it's the same, have you looked at that?
Yeah, same, exact same that they provided, Trail County as well, one thing. Maybe Richard or Brandon remembers it and I. Maybe I still give us a.
Yeah, three months before, they were gonna check on the status of the new ambulance.
Right, remember that.
It's probably due now.
Yeah.
So I'd invite them to your.
Yep. Twentieth meeting or. Yes.
And so the contract is for starting next year, so. I think you can wait on the. On the signing of the. Contract until the twentieth too, I mean, they we they need to come in here and address this again. If you guys listen to it, but.
There was the issue with the. The ambulance and family here.
They sold the ambulance and.
Okay, I think we.
It's that issue, but also that we don't have a full-time E E M T or that could even drive the ambulance.
I think we have them come in here and and have a sit down with us, we invite them to the twentieth. And uh have them come in here and give us a. An update.
Yeah.
To God's office, be direct to.
Yeah.
It's frustrating that our taxpayers are spending ninety thousand dollars and we having a local ambulance service here in.
And I think it'd be good for three new commissioners to hear their.
Absolutely.
Position on that.
Exactly, yeah.
It was interesting.
And that's why I said.
So I think it'd be good for you guys to.
It is, but on the other hand. There's nobody to support it.
Exactly.
That's the problem.
Fortunate to have a couple of the.
We're lucky we got what we got, unfortunately, I mean, the good thing is he's got a pickup that he uses.
Yeah.
To get everybody ready to transport. I mean, it's not what everybody wants to hear, but. He claims this is fast, I don't know.
But looking at the. Back history, that a lot of people, probably new people don't know about, I know a lot of the back history. And I know why we don't have any E M Ts here in our county or in in our area. And. We should have a meeting to talk about that, because I can tell you why.
Well, let's let's have that as part of the.
Yep.
N T A contract and the presentation they give you guys.
Hey, just.
Well, it's not free to maintain ambulances on the. Money is being spent.
It'll be a good topic to conversate.
Yes. Well, I've uh I have more questions than answers right now, so.
Okay, end of your transfers. You turn to eleven in your packets. Uh. How many part of general fund? Seventy-three thousand. One hundred forty-six sixty-eight.
That's just the con, we do this every year, so it's pretty, it's pretty simple, same stuff we do every year.
The other payments that Jake's made.
What's that?
Remember the payments that Jake's made. Seventy-three. Yeah, you just transferring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do, the one invoice that was pulled out for Jake, we need to. Figure out which one is that Jake needs to pay on that as well.
Okay, yep.
We'll just.
So these are. Would you like to reach out to Jake and just have him come through this here?
Yeah, let's see it again. Like the water heater work, that would be ours. The fourteen twenty-three oh eight. The water cooler leak would be ours. The hot water issue for ninety is ours. I think this is basically all ours. So what we've always paid for in the past.
Yes.
It's for the store at the Gold Mike.
So is that something we're just gonna cover then, that we've covered these all in the past? Did you guys get a, wanna go through this again? Okay.
Yep.
So it's.
Kind of part of the contract.
Yeah, it's our building and our.
We're stuck with the repairs.
Yes.
I agree.
I'll make a motion, we pay all that, if I guess we probably don't need to make a motion, it's that'll be approval of the bills. I'll make a motion to approve all the bills, I think they've been all looked at, no, right?
Well.
Was there more?
There's more here.
Oh.
So, let's, let's hold off on that right now. Okay, are you ready for?
Make a motion to try and bring transfers?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Yeah. Do we have a motion to approve the transfers?
Which ones were they? The seventy-three and what?
The other one was small one.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Second from Richard, any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Okay, over on. Leslie, are you here? Yes, there you are.
Morning.
Leslie, yeah, why don't you ex- explain who you are and what you do?
Yeah, I don't know if Don remembers me way back in the day, but my name is Leslie Lubinow, I'm the East District Director for N D S U Extension. And I have the privilege of supervising agents in the eastern part of the state. So that includes Megan here, I've met Megan Big, she's our egg and natural resources agent here, she started in January. And she has previous succession work um in another county as well, so we're very glad to have her aboard. And today, the big thing I'm gonna talk to you guys about is. A family community wellness agent, job search that we've been having and talking about a candidate and salaries. But there's a lot of new faces here, so I thought maybe we should start with maybe an extension one oh one, what is how do extensions and counties work together? And um. I'll just pass on a couple of things for you guys, just to kind of have in your back pocket. But extension and county commissions work together to fund the extension office. And we do this through a financial partnership. And this financial partnership is agreed upon by N D S U Extension, the. Association of Counties and the North Dakota County Commissioners Association. And what this means for you guys and what it means for us is for our agents. The counties pay fifty percent of the salary for our agents, so they're half price to you. And N D S U will pay the other half of the salary. And all of the benefits for the position. You guys also get to be um, you know, with extension, you're part of our network, we have statewide network and resources at the university to help people. The other part of this agreement is that the county provides for operating dollars for the extension office. And this is includes support staff for the office, so Jessica downstairs, she's paid a hundred percent by the county. And the two agents are fifty percent, well, Megan's fifty percent. Does that make sense? So we have this opening for a family community wellness agent, and I do have the job description here too, if you'd like to see it. Um what this person does for the community, but their job is to educate the community. In leadership, civic engagement, food and nutrition, financial security, food safety. And also work with the four H programs here in the county. Steel County has one of the highest four H program enrollments in the whole state. In terms of percent, it's one in four kids. In terms of percent, it's one in four kids in the county is a member of four H. The other part of this is I've been in last year talking with the commission about hiring. And this position is a shared position between Steel County and Nelson County. So for this position, you pay twenty-five percent of the salary. Nelson County pays twenty-five percent. And N D S U does the fifty percent and all the benefits. And we've had a job search going on. And Brandon has been a part of that from the Steel County Commission, as is Megan from Steel County. We also had members from Nelson County. As well as part of that search. We had a wonderful interview with an individual a couple of weeks ago. That I would like to hire. And the committee had agreed to that they would like to hire. I am coming in with a proposal for a salary of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred for this individual. And this person has thirty-five years of experience. She's got a background in education. And also a master's degree in education, and she also has a business type of background as well. So why I'm here today is to ask you if you're willing to cost share. The twenty-five percent of the fifty-seven thousand and seven hundred dollars for this position. So I've got some numbers here to show you guys, because we have a little bit of a. Kind of a situation. Going on with what's in the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three and this salary. We have enough coffee. So um. The previous budget was at fifty-two thousand seven hundred. That's what the previous extension agent was making. And we thought that would be a placeholder as we did our search for this position. Um, we, at N D S U, we like to give people a salary based on a base rate. And also their years of experience that is applicable for this job. So since this person has a master's degree, the base for a master's for an extension agent position is fifty thousand two hundred. And she has, or fifty-one thousand. Two hundred, and she's got some years of experience teaching in the schools. That I thought it directly relates to the position, and that is how I came up with a proposal of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. So what does this mean for your county's commitment? Right now, if we put that into the books. There's gonna be a shortfall. It's there in yellow. It's a little bit under thirteen hundred dollars. That we would have a shortfall for. So we have to decide how we're gonna pay for that. There's a couple of different solutions for that. If this is a salary you guys are willing to go up to. One, I might need your help Carly with this. I've been trying to. To ask Emily, but I need a little clarification. We have some salary savings. In fiscal year twenty-three current. That is sitting there. Twenty-two, thank you, twenty-two. Um, several that, like, we looked at it, Megan, it was like sixteen thousand dollars are sitting in the salaries line. Right now, because there was no F C W agent since January of this year. So all that money that we had budgeted from. For having an agent has been sitting there that whole time. Carly, are you aware? Can that money? Go to help. Shore up this shortfall for the next fiscal year, or is this?
No, that goes back to general fund.
Okay. Even extension money goes to the general fund? We have a separate levy. The next levy will kick in. When did you guys, you did that in June. It should kick in. I think it should kick in in twenty twenty-three, but we didn't budget that levy, you know. That levy wasn't in the budget that was approved for twenty-three. It's holders approved it in June. So. In the budget. Or.
But what is it gonna be eleven?
It should be, because we'll be over two mils for twenty twenty-three. With just the being multi.
Okay.
What, what did the? Mill, what, what do the about, what was about?
Up to four mils, two levy up to four mils, and it'd be like two point seven. I think is what will end up like in the forward twenty twenty-three.
Based upon just the numbers. You submitted for your budget, not this position?
So when I submitted that budget, I went off the master's amount. Cause a bachelor's is like so starting off at a base salary, so I went.
Maybe I got the short, did you include this new position in your?
Yes, yeah.
Sixteen hundred is the shortfall we're talking about, even including that number?
Thirteen hundred is the shortfall, inclusive of that, yeah, because of years of experience.
Right, but we budgeted, but we're short thirteen hundred of what you're saying, for what we budgeted.
For what we budgeted.
So your question is whether the levy to mount that specifically leveled levy for extension. Leftovers go into the general fund is your question, but where do the other ones go?
And that's what I, yeah, I did. Because that's.
I don't know the answer yet. I'll tell me, and that's something that we'll have to talk with the others about.
Because those are not county general funds. They are extension.
What happens to those funds? I, I don't really.
Do they, you know, are they always identified for extension activities by?
But. Maybe if we can get past this in terms of today, when you say. If those funds are available to this part of your levy and your designated funds, then. The money would come up there. If they aren't, then the commission would alternative go to make it up.
They remain in the extension form.
For those of us who are new here. For those of us that are new here, is this a program that we've been a part of in the past? And was this something that was voted on in the last election and approved by the public?
The, the position has been present in different. Um, amounts of time. Since I started in Steel County in two thousand six. It was one day a week then, when I was here as the county agent.
So we have been a part of.
So it's been part of this program. Um, the newest agreement is a fifty fifty split with Nelson County.
Okay.
Um, so it's always been there.
Okay.
But it has, it has increased in time through twenty eighteen years.
We're bringing up that we didn't budget that.
I don't know if it matters, but I, we've never really had that.
In the century code, it says that unbudgeted amounts, unanticipated things can't come out of county general, but I don't know what's in your county general. To support the extension office. That's in the century. That this is an unanticipated budget spent. So.
Whether that's part of your funds. Designated extension. It's gonna go into the, I mean, this year. Stay in your. Fine item, is that, is that money is available?
Emily texted me, she said, I explained to her that normally budgets are not spent two hundred percent, so they would like to balance out. So she said we'd be okay with it.
One of the questions I asked, and I referred to that earlier with the coroner's position. Do we keep raising individual salaries for people at random without? Forth thought to the other employees?
That's a whole other issue.
Just a question.
Let's keep on, on figuring out if we can get this funded or not through.
It sounds like we can get it.
So.
Can you give them a little background for the commissioners that don't know? You started on it. How many days a week were they here before?
Yeah, so the previous position was slightly a different split. It was a sixty-fourty split where Steel County paid sixty percent. And Nelson paid forty. And the person who had the position, Amber Stockland, she lived in Cooperstown, so she. Um, when she was hired, she was told to. Make a home base. Was Finley, makes sense. And then in the end, she decided that she wanted to also travel up to Cooperstown. Or not, up to Lakota to do that position. So she was mostly three days a week here. Two days a week up in Nelson County. And that was, um, when she traveled to Lakota, because she chose that, that was out of her own pocketbook. We didn't pay mileage. For her to go between the two county seats. Now, um, extension us have found that we want all these hybrid agreements between two counties to be at fifty fifty. So I negotiated that with both county commissions, came to an agreement earlier this summer about that. So now it's fifty fifty, and they're to pick a home base. This person's. Address is Lakota, so it's likely that she will, she would select Lakota as her, as her address. And then she would, her job is still fifty percent of the time that she works is to be on efforts to Steel County. And that includes coming down here for educational programming.
She wouldn't be coming here though, like you said, Chris, she wouldn't have to come here.
She wouldn't have to come here for office hours. She could do those office hours up in Lakota. Um, we did ask her to, um, during the interview about how, how would you do this type of job when one is sixty miles away? And I thought she gave a fairly good answer about, um, meeting people. She said, you know, I'm actually really new to both communities. And it's a perfect way to, to say, hey, I haven't met you yet. Let's make an appointment and do networking that way. I was pretty confident with her answer. Brandon, were you?
Yeah.
So I think. Um, she's serious too about. Understanding that fifty percent of the time. Is to come to down this county, and if they're doing education, they have to be in person, most of it, you know. They're gonna be here. To do that education. With this agreement to, um, her travel to Finley is travel time. That would be mileage and it'd also be work time. Versus Amber did not have that in her position.
Okay, so I guess we would entertain, uh. What you're looking for, Leslie, is, is. Our blessing, uh, cover that. One thousand two hundred eighty-one twenty-five.
Yeah, it's our estimated. I mean, it's, it's an estimate.
Okay.
Cause there, she gets a salary increase. We don't know what that'll be. In July. The employees get increases in July.
Good.
But that's in, that's in here, so.
And then, um. Everybody kind of understands how that's gonna work. Fifty fifty split with Nelson, everybody okay with that? With home base being Lakota.
Likely.
Like, likely.
Yeah.
I mean.
I'll make a motion and move forward with them.
You got a motion from Richard to move forward? Do we wanna set an amount? I mean, or do we have to?
I, if you wanna, if you.
Up to the discretion of, or do we, are we gonna go?
Is this the, is it, could it be?
This is the final amount?
This will be the highest.
This will be the highest.
This will be the highest that you will approve. You'll decide if she wants the job or doesn't.
The one thousand two hundred eighty-one twenty-five.
Well, fifty-seven thousand seven hundred is what I'm gonna offer her as a salary. I have not offered to her yet, because I can't do that without.
Right.
Dollars.
So I got a motion from Richard. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Second from Perry. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Say no? Motion carry.
Thank you. I, I'll, I'm gonna go to Nelson County tomorrow and see if they also approve that amount. And we'll take it from there, Brandon. I'll let you know if it goes sideways. Um, the other thing is we had a visit about. Travel costs for this position. Um, looking ahead in the budget, Megan has about four thousand dollars in her travel line for travel for two agents. To be honest, I. I like it when there's five thousand per agent and per county, but everyone's a little different. So we're gonna be tight on budgets. And we had a little discussion about. How can we save money for travel for this individual to help your guys' bottom line? Um, as well. And one of the things that had come up. Was that this county has vehicles. That are. Not in use. I don't know if your county would be willing to. Have a vehicle for her. That she could use.
I think our vehicles are pretty old. I think it's, it's, I don't think.
You know, that's something that we could, uh, table.
Okay.
And let the board think about it just a little bit more of how we exactly. Cause I mean, if, if we go, if we go, we were, okay, we're gonna split the. The mileage, whatever. Well, I mean, next year, we're gonna have to probably up that travel budget then, if they're using their own vehicle or vice versa.
Yeah, hotels and food.
Right, so, I mean, it's kinda. It's kind of unexpected too, that we're gonna, we have this applicant that is qualified up to this much too, right?
Yes, yeah, definitely.
And it's kind of a new venture that we're getting in with, with Nelson County fifty fifty split, so. Um, I think we let the board. Ball on that a little bit, gonna bring it up and look Perry, we'll bring that up in old business, I think, next meeting.
Okay.
And, I mean, is, is that, do you have any more?
I do have, I, I did look into state fleets. And I, I do, I brought a handout here about it, about like how much it would cost for a state fleet. Um. Instead, that she could just use a state fleet. So. Right now, if you drive your personal car, it's sixty-two and a half cents a mile. That is the county reimbursement. For a state fleet right now. The cost per mile is forty-one cents a mile. But they also charge. A depreciation cost per month for the vehicle, and it's currently forty dollars a month depreciation. Here, if you wanna take a look at this, um. So I tried to figure out. This, just, I think about this for next time of like, well, what would the break even be? Like at sixty-two and a half cents, forty-one and a half cent plus depreciation. Let's say Steel County pays. Six months of the depreciation charge of forty dollars a month. That's two hundred and forty dollars. And then whatever miles, how many miles would she have to drive to make it more? Fiscally responsible to have a state fleet versus. Using her personal car. It'd be cheaper for the county. And, um, at the current. It's one thousand one hundred and fifty miles per county that she would have to. To do. F C W agents, I've kind of looked on others that I supervise. It depends on where they're located. Um, it's up to like three thousand miles a year. So it would work, maybe. We don't know how many, you know, this is the whole thing like Brandon said, if it's all new, we don't know how much she's gonna travel. We don't know. There's a lot of things we don't know, so we're making. We're trying to do the best financially for everybody here. But that would be the break even would be. Um, the county would be charged for, you know, eleven hundred and fifty dollars, and it'd be about, you know, if you see it, that'd be like seven hundred and twelve dollars of that. The other thing would be though is. State fleet for the next biennium, they, they want us to budget much higher. They want us to go at a hundred twenty-three dollars a month depreciation. And at forty-one cents a mile. So with that. It'd be thirty-eight hundred miles per county. That's not even doable, like, that's blowing us way out of the water. Then she should just be driving a personal vehicle or. Or if there's access to a county vehicle. So. At current cost, it could maybe work. At budgeted cost. No, this is not a good option to have a state fleet. So. That's, that was kind of my bottom line when I researched it. So it's just a little more food for thought. Um, when is your, is your next meeting in January, or do you have one yet in December?
We have one the twentieth. We have one the twentieth.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think the last thing we got on there is approval of bills. Okay, Charlie?
Putting clarification on that vote for closing the courthouse on the twenty-third. Um, so. When is the question, they're closed at one.
Or one.
Okay, it's one, but that, so that, I'm assuming what we. Means assume, but, so they'll work their five hours, no lunch breaks, and then they, the, the balance off. And the thing about that, the, you know, last minute stuff, that the courthouse be open in an hour.
Well, I see, because we approved it to the polls at noon, right?
Approved at one.
It's a little thing, but. Okay, clarification, I mean, that's gonna go through the lunch hour, that way it's, you know, taking a lunch break, so the courts will be open.
It's a great idea.
Okay, one o'clock.
No lunch break.
I'm gonna come up here, twelve fifty five.
Okay, um. Do you wanna keep going through the bills, guys?
I think go through like every single transaction.
You'll, you'll. It's a lot of.
Yeah, once you start looking at them more, you'll recognize them.
More recognize, yep.
Okay.